I will now call to order the open session of the December 16, 2021 Board of Education Meeting. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash, Tongva, Fernandino, Tatabiam, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. I would like to remind everyone present to please make sure that you are wearing a mask that completely covers your nose and mouth. I think everyone is, so we really appreciate that. And I would like to ask Ms. Lisa Dyson, could you please come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Ms. Clark, if you could please call the roll at this time.
Member Aga Khanian.
President.
Member Weisberg.
President.
Clerk Ferguson.
Present.
Vice President Tabit.
President.
And President Fritner.
Present. Thank you very much. We would like to acknowledge sad news, the passing of longtime and recently retired employee Edgar Ariana. He was hired in 2001 and retired in February of this year. He started as a substitute custodian and worked at Disney Elementary School and John Burrows High School for the majority of his career. Many members of the Burbank School community, especially those involved in the JBHS VMA program, remember Edgar fondly. Tonight's meeting will be adjourned in his memory. Item number five, reporting on closed session. Closed session items 3A, 3B, 3D, and 3E were for discussion only with no action taken. Item 3C, the board met and approved the notice of intent to demote and a statement of charges for employee number CL 0105-21. The vote was 5-0. We'll move to item six, adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, move on to item seven, items for future agendas. Does anyone have any items for future agendas? Again, seeing none. Thank you. We'll move on. Before the annual organization of the board, we will have an opportunity for public comment. If anyone has any public comments they would like to make before the annual organization of the Board of Election of Officers, an individual or group representative may address the board on the annual organization. This period will be strictly on the reorganization of the board and the election officers. Please complete a white request card. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allocated to each speaker except by unanimous consent of the Board of Education. At this moment, I have one white card. It's Mr. Joel Sloshman.
Oh, I wanted to talk about an agenda item.
Oh, so this was for, okay, this wasn't on the organization. Thank you. So at the moment, I have no white cards for comment on the reorganization. Hearing them, we will close that public comment and move on to the reorganization of the board. And the first item on that is remarks from the outgoing Board of Education president. I try not to write speeches because I feel very stilted when I do it, but I also felt like I would forget things, so forgive me. I tried not to be too long. We've got a very full agenda. I'd like to move forward. It has been my honor and privilege to serve as the Board of Education president. This position really has no additional power associated with it compared to any of the other board positions, but there are a few more responsibilities, and I've tried to fulfill them to the best of my ability. You do occasionally have to represent the board and/or the district, and I've tried to always do so with dignity. Of course, as has been said many times before, none of us does this job alone, and I have had the privilege, really the continuing privilege, to work with colleagues who are intelligent, enthusiastic, and passionate about education, and specifically about the education and safety of the students, teachers, and staff in the Burbank Unified School District. I thank you all for your support and your interaction during my time as president. I also owe a debt of gratitude to Dr. Hill, to the senior administration, and all the support staff. The challenges faced during this last year, and really two years, and that we continue to face, have been monumental. After cutbacks we had made preceding years, everyone is handling a greater load than they had previously, and you've done it just, and I obviously screwed up my notes there, but you've done a fantastic job, and support to the board and the staff is greatly appreciated. At this time last year, when I was making my introductory remarks as board president, the first thing I had talked about was how we'd gone through a year like no other that we had experienced before, and hoped that with vaccines just starting at that point last December, that things would improve. While they did improve in many ways over the last year, I think we would still have to say that overall, this has been as challenging a year as we've ever had. While we were able to move our students back into in-person learning, and that's been fantastic, there have been many hurdles to making that possible while also keeping our students and staff safe. And unfortunately, just as we are dealing with the increased COVID numbers due to the Delta variant at this time last year, suddenly we're, look, we've got the Omicron variant looming over us now and are starting to see COVID numbers increase again. It's a reminder that as we enjoy the winter break, and I hope everyone has a fantastic winter break and enjoy the holidays, but we should try to stay vigilant and follow safety guidelines, like most especially getting vaccines, wearing masks, and trying to socially distance, which can be hard when you're together with families, and hopefully we'll be able to avoid another wide breakout. I've heard it said by members of other boards locally, as well as by commentators in the media, that school board meetings are becoming ground zero for all social issues. There have been numerous examples in other districts in the state and around the country of school board meetings involving the shouting matches or free-for-alls when discussions on things like mask mandates, vaccines, DEI initiatives, and more have taken place. While we've had some challenging meetings here in Burbank, I'm happy to, I'm proud that both as a board and as a community, we've not dropped to that level. I hope we can continue that way going forward as we face more challenges. I quoted President Biden, President-elect Biden at that time last year, in my remarks, saying that we can be opponents, but we should not be enemies. I still believe that to be the case, and that we can treat each other with dignity and respect even as we disagree. We still have many challenges in front of us, and we will not always, as we have seen many times, we as a board may make decisions that will not please everyone. But I believe that I, the rest of the board members, and the superintendent are continually trying to work in the best interests of the students, teachers, staff, and community. So, thank you for my time as president, and, sure, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you. Being board president, as you said, doesn't come with, you know, a pay raise. It certainly comes with having to make some calls, and especially calls in this past year that really have had to occur at times in a vacuum without a lot of other facts because it's hard to connect with one another, it's hard to check in. And I just want to celebrate, first of all, your ability to navigate that internally was huge this year and critically important, but also how you were able to do that with city partners was really incredible, and working with former Mayor Frudos and others to really try and keep things moving and to get a joint meeting going, all of those. Those are huge accomplishments when we've really had a challenging time doing just that. I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for being a leader that I look up to, that I respect immensely, and I have a lot to learn from. But also, as, again, as a proud openly gay man serving in public office, I will also say thanks for looking out for, you know, the students and the faculty and the staff who, you know, for a very long time have wanted to be seen as equals and treated as such. And I think you being who you are in the world and being such a powerful advocate for that community has made kids safer. And when they hear your roar on their behalf, I know it meant worlds to people to see that, especially from the president of the Board of Education. So, thank you for your service, and more than anything, thank you for helping kids, I think, in this district feel safe and like they belong.
Dr. Aga Khanian?
Thank you. I know it's the last time I'm calling you as president, Fritner, but hopefully I will call you again, President Fritner. But I want to take this opportunity to thank you. You know, it's been challenging, you know, these two years, I agree with you, but at the same time, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished under your leadership at these challenging times. You are a friend, you're someone I look up to, you're someone that I can always call when I have questions or concerns. But more important also, you're someone who truly cares about our students and our community. And it is something that I'm trying to, as someone to look up to, to have that genuine love of our community. So I want to thank you, and I want to thank you for being one of my mentors. And I think everyone agrees that, you know, as a board, you know, there have been instances that we had discussions, but I think listening to everyone and hearing what, you know, what the concerns are, but also at the same time, you know, understanding what our needs are, but also at the same time also making sure that everyone understands that why we're here. And I think you remind people every, on every meeting, why we're here. And I think that also resonates just in your speeches, but also, I won't call it a speech, it resonates in who you are and what you do in the community. So thank you very much for your leadership, and, you know, and I also want to thank, you know, your family and wife, and I know it's difficult, and, but, you know, we're practically neighbors too, so thank you very much. Thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership.
Dr. Weisberg.
I'll make it quick. Thank you for your patience. Yesterday was my one-year anniversary of being on the board, and you have been really patient and helpful. It's also nice to have another fellow White Sox and Bears fan to be depressed with. I am a Dodgers fan, but the steadiness with which you lead is something that I've been learning a lot from and will continue to learn a lot from, and you're not going anywhere, so I look forward to learning with you as we move forward.
Well, Mr. Fritner, my first concern is for Mary, your wife, because you've been the president and Dr. Fritner for a while, and Mary really enjoys that, so we're going to have to think of a new phrase for the two of you because she equated that as, you know, Joe Biden and Mrs. and Dr. Jill Biden. So, I, you know, I appreciate your leadership and your pragmaticism and your ability to see the bigger picture, and I think that's important in leadership, that it's not just what may be closest to your heart or maybe what your needs are, but what the needs and the focus should be of the bigger mentality, the bigger group. And so I always enjoyed talking to you and learning a different perspective, maybe from what I was seeing or what I would have. And both you and Mary have become very good friends of mine on the outside, and I enjoy your company very much. And I, there's no reason why I won't continue. You're just moving seats, not leaving, so, but as the board always recognizes the, I don't know if we're supposed to stand up here at this point or what, but the board always recognizes our outgoing president with a plaque with your name in terms of years of, year of service, and I can't even read that without my glasses, but it does say Steve Fritner, in appreciation for his dedicated service as president of the board at Burbank Unified School District 2020 through 2021, and then our seal in the Board of Education. So, thank you for speaking there. A well, you know, it's, for the amount of work and time and effort that you have put into this, a plaque is a commemoration, but nowhere near serves what you have done for this district and this board and the people who are in this room. And so from myself and everyone else, I thank you so very much for your term of service. And that was very hard to talk and look at at the same time, so apologize for my face.
That's all right. Now that my face is as red as my mask, we'll move on to the election of officers.
President Fritner.
Yes, Mr. Ferguson.
I will nominate Vice President Tabit to serve as president of the Board of Education.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Vice President Tabit be elected, be nominated for president. Are there any other nominations? If not, then we can vote by acclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. I wouldn't say 5-0. You're allowed to vote for yourself, so congratulations, President Tabit.
Amen.
And we'll move on to Vice President.
Ms., oh, you do it. Really? Yeah? Okay. Mr. Fritner.
President Tabit.
I would like to nominate Steve Ferguson for the position of vice president of the board.
Second.
It's, I think it's been seconded by Dr. Weisberg. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we can vote by acclamation. All those in favor of Mr. Ferguson as vice president, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Created 5-0. Congratulations, Mr. Ferguson, Vice President Ferguson. And finally, Mr. Ferguson, Vice President Ferguson.
Celebrating an anniversary on the board, welcoming our newest member, but certainly celebrating a very hard year of work, and now very honored to nominate Emily Weisberg, Dr. Weisberg, to serve as clerk of the Board of Education.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Dr. Weisberg be nominated for the position of clerk. Any other nominations, which I wouldn't expect? No? So we can vote by acclamation. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm counting yous on aye whether you like it or not. It passes 5-0. Congratulations, Clerk Weisberg. So, if you will now excuse us for just a
Are you all ready here? Okay. We'll continue moving on to 9D, which is remarks from the incoming Board of Education president.
There you go.
I guess that's me. So, I don't really write speeches. I just sort of speak from my heart, usually those moments, which sometimes gets me in trouble because sometimes I say the wrong things, but they're heartfelt. It's once again an honor. This is my second term on the board and my second turn being president. It's an honor and a privilege to sit in this seat, to run these meetings, to work with my colleagues on the board, to work with the district staff, to work with parents and students and community members, to hear your thoughts and ideas about experiences everyone is having in the district, and how we as a school district can grow and work together to become what I have always wanted to be, is the best school district in the state of California. And I think that we are an extraordinary school district, but like I think with everything, no matter how good or how not good you may do something, there's always room to grow and for improvement. Even the things we do absolutely the best can always be looked at. We have been through a very different time the last two years. Some of it was difficult, some of it was terrifying, some of it was emotionally draining. But I feel at this point in time, unfortunately with the Omicron, with the Omicron virus rearing back up a little bit, my, my hope is that we are, have worked through the worst portions of it and have learned from that, and so if it does get uglier, we, we know where to go. We've done it already. And so then our focus really can get our district re, again, looking at not how to manage the crisis, but how to move forward, and how to get our, our thoughts and processes back to doing what we do best, which is educating kids. And so that is my hope for the coming year, is that our focus returns, not that it ever really left, but that, that that becomes a focus for us, educating our kids, educating our learners, as Dr. Mises would say. And I, and I hope that you're all on board with me. I'm sure you are because that's why you took this job in the first place, is that we care about our students and our kids and where they're going. So, that's, that's my focus in the coming year. And it may not be an easy route. I know with limited staff at our school sites, limited staff at the district office, we continuously, as a board, ask you to jump through major hurdles all the time, and sometimes you're that one person doing that hurdle jumping with no support, but that's life as we know it in education at this moment, and we can hope and pray for better times. But at the moment, I thank you very much for all you've done, and I know what you all will continue to do because your hearts are in the same place mine is. You want what's best for the kids in our district and the families in our district. So thank you for this opportunity, and let's move forward. We will move on to number 10 of the agenda, presentations and recognitions. Oh, and this is always the fun part. 10A, the holiday music presentation. Members of the John Burrows High School Vocal Music Association, under the direction of Brendan Jennings, will perform a selection of holiday music. Dr. Pramo, were you going to say something?
I just have to dance.
Oh. Is there someone else here besides Mr. Jennings? Would you introduce?
I'm Kristina Janikian. I am the mama for muses. This is muses from John Burrows. They're our a cappella singing group from Sounds, the, from Sound Sensations Choir. Mr. Jennings couldn't be here tonight. He had, there was other stuff going on with other choirs, so I'm here representing. I don't do all the instructing. They're going to go ahead and sing for you guys, and congratulations to the new president, Vice President Clerk. So, girls, you know what you're singing first? Okay. They're going to take it away. Enjoy. One, two, three.
Rockin' around the Christmas tree at the Christmas party, huh, 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 huh. Mistletoe hung where you can see, every couple tries to stop, huh, huh, huh. Rockin' around Rockin' around the Christmas tree, let the Christmas spirit ring, huh, huh, huh. Later we'll have some pumpkin pie and we'll do some caroling, huh, huh, huh. You will get a sentimental feeling when you hear voices singing, let's be jolly deck the halls with vows of holly. Rockin' around the Christmas tree, have a happy holiday, huh, huh, huh. Everyone's dancing merrily in the new old fashioned way. Rockin' around the Christmas tree, have a happy holiday. Jingle bells, jingle bells, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, the jingle all the way. Whoa, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, the jingle all the way. Whoa, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Dashing through the snow, dashing through the snow, in a one-horse open sleigh. For the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells on bobtails, bells on bobtails, drinking spirits bright. Fun it is to ride and sing a sleighing song tonight. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, the jingle all the way. Whoa, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, the jingle all the way. Whoa, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues wish to say something?
Just say.
Adam.
Dr. Aga Konian.
Wonderful performance. And by the way, you had your masks on, so I know it was a little more difficult, but you sounded wonderful, so thank you very much.
Thank you again, John Burrows.
Thank you.
Moving on to ten B, Recognition of Burbank Unified District's English Language Development Theater Arts Integration Program. Sharon Casao, Assistant Superintendent Instructional Services, will facilitate the recognition of the Burbank Unified School District's English Language Development Theater Arts Integration Program, winner of the 2021 California School Boards Association Golden Bell Award.
Good evening, President Tabit, members of the Board, Superintendent Hill, and our school community. Yes, it's my pleasure to recognize our theater arts program, our integration of the arts program for Burbank USD, which won this wonderful Golden Bell Award at the California School Boards Association Annual Conference. And I also want to make sure that everybody knows a little bit about what it's about. So, it really is an arts integration residency that teams classroom teachers with professional teaching artists to provide students standards-based instruction in theater arts and English language development. So, it's particularly for English learners, which makes it so fantastic. And it also, the goals are to build the teacher capacity, to improve student access, and make them more connected to the school and enjoy, you know, learning, and it also enriches their language development. So, it provides engaging, supportive instruction. And I also want to recognize the people that are responsible for this. I wrote down their names because it's a lot. So, we have Jessica Wirtlieb and Jim Kuntz Vermeer, Jen Goldenberg, our EL Coordinator. We have the teaching artist, David Gutierrez, Catherine Johnson, and the coordinator from the Music Center, which is Patricia Cantorelli. And then we also want to recognize Kate Randolph, who was the teaching artist who piloted the program and got it started for us, but who passed away and wasn't able to see it expanded as, as it is now. But, you know, she's still in our hearts, she started the whole thing. And I also want to have special recognition for Peggy Flynn, who always finds a way to make these programs happen and works on sustainability, and also wrote the application. That was the winning application for our district, too. And it really, not only does it recognize the district program, but it also is an acknowledgement to our governance. You know, our Board's support for all of these programs was highlighted throughout, and that's how these programs live on. So, that's it. And we'd like to invite you all down with the Superintendent to take a picture with our Golden Bell.
It's a real bell. It's a real bell.
It is a real bell. It was in my car.
You should. I know, but it was under your, your tenure, so. Squish.
Squish.
Do we have comments from the Board? Oh, Mr. Fritner, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Casao, for the presentation. I had the, again, the honor and privilege of representing the district with Dr. Hill in accepting the award. The things you find out, that, yes, it's very heavy. It's a real bell. It will clang if you move it too much while you're walking to and from the presentation. But really, thank you to everyone, and you listed everyone who has, you know, worked on the project, but most especially Jen Goldenberg and Peggy Flynn, you know, who were able to be on hand for the presentation. Just, just really reflects so incredibly well on our district. And as we were waiting for the presentation, I was sitting with Dr. Hill and watching, there are several districts that, you know, won awards, and all I could think of was, we do that, we do that. We, we could, we've got a lot of good things going on in the district and a lot of things that are being recognized, and I look forward to getting more of these in the future. But congratulations to everyone who worked so hard on this.
Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you. Question for Ms. Casae, you were also in with Dr. Paramo in San Diego presenting, correct? Could you give us a little information about the workshop you did? Collaboratively did?
So, that was myself, Dr. Hill, and Jen Almer, and we presented on our algebra project, you know, with the math collaborative with California Ed Partners, and that was really fun. So, we got to really show what our project was about and how we were serving Latinx students and making progress in their achievement.
What, what I really love about that is that, you know, again, as Mr. Fritner said, you know, sometimes we've gone to these conferences and we come back and we're like, we're doing a lot of this, we're doing the vast majority of this. And usually what we're not doing is usually tied to some unique thing, like Long Beach has a state college, right? And so they have a new program, and that's unique to them. Having said that, we do a lot of it. But what I've always appreciated about our district and our leadership, right, is that it's not just about the bells, right? In fact, there are more bells that we have missed out on because we just didn't file for them than, than not. And, and what I really love is that in a moment like this in history, where education has been such the inspirer and the, really the, the call to action, that in this moment we're being recognized. And in this moment, the leadership of, of those educators who have worked hard for decades to get where they are is being recognized. So, again, the bell is one thing. What I love more than anything is that we are, rightfully so, being seen as leaders in spaces that are very challenging for this state and for our colleagues from across the state, a bunch of politicians looking for a bell for themselves, for them to give it to you and for us. It, it just is telling. So, again, thank you to Jen Goldenberg and to Peggy for, for landing this one for us and everybody for their work.
Dr. Aga Konian, please.
I just want to echo what my colleagues were saying and congratulate you. And I, I also love the fact that something new, integrating, and, and I think it's something that's fit for where we are, but also where we're moving forward as a district for our future. So, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Dr. Weisberg, nope?
Ditto.
Ditto. Well, thank you. I want to, you know, our Golden Bell Award and the program that it highlighted, I'm, I'm really proud that we presented that for an award, because when I, actually, you said it well, we have many programs that would have hands down won awards. When you watch what the other districts are doing, you're really proud. And you know that the program that, that we put out there for, sorry, that won the Golden Bell was really special, and I didn't see any other awards that were even close to the program that our district put out. So, it was really great to see that. We weren't just an award winner, but, I mean, a really high-level, important program came through for our kids, and that was, that really shone or shined when we were there watching the other awards. So, I was really proud of Burbank and our teachers that put that program on. And then, and then it was also an honor, Sharon, to have you and Dr. Hill and Jen Almer, did you say, presenting, because, you know, two different reasons why we were there, but both really important. And I think that for other districts to come and see the success we've had in an area and how they too might be able to do the same thing, that's the kind of leadership role that I think is, is important. And I think that going forward, we've got so much stuff, we could just take over that conference and show them how to do it. So, thank you for taking the time out of your very busy schedule to represent us in San Diego at the School Board Convention, and I'm hoping we get to do it a lot more. Did I forget you?
No, 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 I just had something to add. I know we are at a future Board meeting, we'll have kind of the truncated presentation of the, of the workshop that was done, but I did get a chance to be there for that as well, and just a fantastic job with that, too. We've, we've been to these in the past, and, and sometimes you can be in, in some of these workshops, and it's very dry, and you're waiting to get to the next one, and this wasn't anything like that. This was a really incredibly, you know, a lot of attention, a lot of questions, that's why you know it's really doing well, is there's participation from the people there. So, congratulations on that as well, because you did a fantastic job, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fritner, that was very kind. Okay, moving on to eleven, reports from the Board, starting with, I don't think we have any, it would be eleven A, Student Representatives, but it is, yeah, it's, today was the final day of finals for this semester, I am sure. They are tired after studying so hard. And probably this was, you know, other things going on. So, we'll move on to number twelve, Reports to the Board. Twelve A, Report on Facilities and Technology Projects. Debbie Cutka, Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services, will report on facilities and technology projects as listed on the Consent Agenda as presented. Ms. Cutka.
Good evening, President Tabit. Congratulations on your new role, as to your fellow members. We have one, if I can get the presentation up, we have one item on the Consent Agenda for a bond-funded project. It is Additive Change Order Number One for Ninho and More. With the project is the Geotechnical Materials Testing and Inspection Services for Disney Elementary. The amount now is not to exceed $115,000. The addition was $30,279 to add additional costs, additional hours needed to perform the non-destructive welding examination and welding inspection necessary to complete the two-story building. So, that will be item fifteen AA on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Twelve B, Month Three Enrollment Reports. Stacy Cash, or is it? John. Dr. Paramo? Dr. Paramo will be reporting on the district's current enrollment numbers as presented.
Good evening, Board President Tabit, distinguished Board members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, district staff, members of the audience. My name is John Paramo, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, and my pronouns are he, him, and his. Tonight, I am here to present some comparison data, and that's based on our third month of enrollment for this school year. So, the purpose for our presentation is to show you the difference between our enrollment last year, 2020, 2021, and how that compares to our enrollment this year. I will also give you information about our inter-district permits, students that were released to other school districts, information regarding capped students, and just some ideas for future consideration. In this first dataset, I know it's really small and the public probably can't see that, but if, if the Board members, if you have it on your laptops, just wanted to draw your attention to the last column on the far right, where you see the numbers that are in parentheticals and in red, those are, are our school sites that are below our projected enrollment. So, side by side, you will see in a blue column our projected enrollment and what our actual numbers are. So, for example, Disney is under projection by 31 students, Edison by 24, and Roosevelt by nine. It's a total reduction by about 64 students. At the secondary, the discrepancy is larger. Every one of our secondary sites is under our projection, with the exception of Burbank High. All of our comprehensive sites together, there is, we are below three, by 347 students. Next slide. So, our next slide just gives you an idea of three years' worth of data, and you can see what our district enrollment was in 2019, 2020, which was 13,758. Last year, we did have a drop, it was 13,414, and now we are at 12,823. So, it's a decrease of 591. Permits declined a little bit last year. We dropped down from three, 1,362 to 1,312. This year, we did go up, and we gained a little bit, and so we have an increase in our permits by 72 students. So, if we subtract 72 from five, 591, you will see that our, our declining enrollment is 519 students. So, inter-district transfer, I'm sorry, inter-district permits, so we, on the previous slide, you saw that it was 72, this is how it breaks down. There are 42 active permits at the high school, that's the largest amount. Then it jumps to the elementary, which is 24 permits, and middle school, that we have six permits, for a total of 72. We did it, we provided data for you in terms of each of our schools in the district and a comparison of which, how many, inter-district permits each one of our schools has. So, if you wanted to look at a comparison, at Roosevelt, they have 11 permits. So if you wanted to look at a comparison, at Roosevelt, they have 11 permits, whereas at Hart, they have 92. And you can also see that in the middle school, Luther is at 142 permits, Werther's at 75, Mears at 94. And the largest amount of permits are at John Burroughs High School with 322. The next dataset will show you the areas in our district at the elementary where we have capped students. Jefferson has three capped students, the largest number at Miller with 28 capped students, Providencia four, Stevenson four, a total of 46. So these 46 students do have priority once there is room available at their local school to go in and to occupy those spaces. But we wanted you to see where the caps are. So if we want to look at a high level, our total enrollment decreased by 519 students since the same time last year. Inter-district permits equal 9.6% of enrollment and increased by 72 students. Inter-district permits help the district offset some declining enrollment, but enrollment most likely will, we're anticipating will decline. What are our assumptions? Real estate prices, pandemic, changes in employment, and concerns around mandated student vaccinations. Students released to other districts have increased from 37 in 2020, 2021 to 80 students in 21, 22. Since students were in distance learning last year, this may have negatively impacted permits and releases to Glendale. Capped students are up from 45 students to 46 students. These families have priority when spaces become available. Future considerations, I think it's important to highlight that permits are offsetting our declining enrollment. Change in employment criteria and board policy to part-time. These are considerations. 10 hours per week, Monday through Friday. Continue to advertise permits to reach out to business partners with permit information, which we are doing. We just need to continue to do that. And approve elementary permits early, possibly, to maintain enrollment in upper grades, grades five and six, but reduce number of capped students. There is additional data in the appendices, but I think that's pretty much self-explanatory unless you would like me to go over that.
Why don't we see if there's any questions from the board?
Absolutely.
Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you, Dr. Paramo, and thank you, Dr. Hill, for sending me the exit code info. I know it's not pretty, but it was really helpful. So I mean, in looking at the breakdown of the exit codes that we have, it seems like, you know, the top two are moved out of Burbank, which seems to be an economic motivator. We know the cost of living here is increasing and it's forcing people to leave Burbank. And that the second largest group are people who go to a private school. And I think we can draw some assumptions related to COVID restrictions. So one of the things I want to talk about, not now, but further on down the line, is how we can address, I mean, we can assume that maybe some of the kids that we've lost will come back if and when COVID subsides enough for that to happen. But I think it's, it's not, none of this is good. What is good is that it seems like a lot of it is not related to dissatisfaction with the district, but rather an economic issue or something related to COVID. But I do want us to talk about, we know that this is going to be an enormous hit to our budget, what we can do moving forward and also perhaps how we can gather data. I know we can't force people to tell us why they're leaving, but I think it's really helpful, this was really helpful for me to be able to gauge why people are leaving the district and how to be proactive. I think some of the data shows there's not much we can do. We can't fix housing prices. But I think it's worth a longer conversation about ways to be proactive in keeping people within the district. Do you, I mean, how much of this do you feel is COVID-related? It certainly seems to be pretty substantial based on what I'm looking at.
That's what it looks like to me. I will say honestly, in my opinion, the entire district team really takes a lot of pride in our projections and we usually project very well. So when we got the data, when we initially got the data and saw the start of the school year, we could see the huge discrepancy, which is something that it was really hard to anticipate and know exactly where it was going to land. So I want to throw that out there. But you know, there were anecdotally many families that shared with me that they had actually made moves out of state, but kept the, last year when we were in distance learning, but just kept their kids enrolled because it was distance learning and they can continue on and they didn't want to disrupt their family. But a lot of that had taken place in the school year, but we didn't see that data until the summertime, when we actually saw them disenroll to move to enroll in their, in their new school and their new state.
One last question, I think I know the answer to. So looking at the breakdown of students by ethnicity, I'm assuming that our Armenian community is within white?
Correct.
Okay. I think it could be helpful if and, I know that people don't always self-identify, but if and when they do, it would be really helpful to also see our Armenian students separate so that we can get a sense too of how that student community is responding. And thank you for this.
No problem.
Please, thank you. Sorry, I'm like waving at you. First of all, thank you for this report. This is pretty devastating news. And I think that's like bottom line. This is millions in our bottom line that we now are accountable for and we need to have a plan for. So first of all, I want to thank staff for this. This is a very scary report to bring to the board. I want to say, you know, we've asked for a lot of data to monitor. Why? Because we're trying to make sure kids don't fall through the cracks.
That's correct.
Fundamentally, right? That has been chief goal number one in keeping people safe. So obviously, there are impacts. What I'd like to see, and relatively quickly, is an analysis of other surrounding districts and exactly how much they have lost. And whether or not the grouping and the categorizations of their departures match or are aligned with ours, or they are not. If they are not, I think that deserves some review, especially by cabinet. But what I would like to start doing, if there is no, so if the state legislature, the state legislature can pass what's called a hold harmless, right? So that means that they will not hold us accountable for the loss in enrollment, also known as they won't cut our funding. Okay, that's critical that we start advocating then now because that is a critical part of that. So I'm going to ask that that be on the next agenda, if that is all right with, that we expedite that to get that on as soon as possible, an agenda. That's the first thing. And the second thing that we ask staff to come back with possibly a tiered approach, a tiered response based off of how much enrollment we can get back if there is not a hold harmless agreement passed by the state. So again, if we can gain back 100 in enrollment, if we anticipate that, fine. We don't need to cut for 500 in enrollment. But I think we can be smart and kind of anticipate now if we give that direction and say, come back with a plan that anticipates the revenue loss and that doesn't anticipate the revenue loss.
Can I add to that for a second, just so you're all aware? Mr. Fritner and myself and Dr. Hill go to a Five Star Meeting, meeting with five other districts nearby every month, except for January and July. But regardless, and many times we have speakers come, we've had the Budget Committee from the state come and meet with us. And that is a constant ask by Dr. Hill and a reminder from Five Star too, to put that out in a resolution, asking the state for hold harmless. And so that is coming from a lot of areas. It's been put out there. We're definitely pushing that and working on it. And, and maybe we need to start adding, when something like that happens at Five Star, we need to be able to present that out, part of that communication piece, so that you all know that somebody is thinking of it and talking about it. But it doesn't hurt that all five of us do it either. So, but there is support from all five districts in pushing that forward.
I think that that's going to be important. I think though, realistically, we need to build a plan that understands that we are going to lose enrollment. And it looks like at least 100 a year and what that looks like. And that's a very painful plan, everybody. And this is why, you know, parcel taxes were sought, frankly, to stabilize this. But if we just get the hold harmless and just push the problem down the road, it will come back and the 500 will be back, but it will be a different 4% of our budget. So I'd like to see plans back from staff.
Definitely, I know last meeting, we asked for a study session. That's something we want to talk, the study session. Tonight, Ms. Cutka is going to talk about our financial projection with enrollment built in. Because we're looking at enrollment drop for this year. We're forecasting another 600 students next year. And so you're absolutely correct of talking about, here's the worst case scenario. We've sent the Five Star letter to advocate for hold harmless. The conversation is also talking about a rolling average of at least three years. So the states started to have conversations. We're here around January, but we have to have that worst case scenario. And then I really appreciate the approach of, hey, what can we build back and have those plans in place if it gets better?
Also asking from through Five Star and our, from our district, some requirements that were required to pay for that, you know, like the Stirs and Purrs payments, that would be a huge help if that were reduced or maintained at the current level or in a miracle, beautiful world, just eliminated. But we know that's not happening. But I mean, that would put, you know, millions of dollars back into our, our general fund. That would be a great help. So anyway, moving on. Thank you. I got to practice turning my head out a little more often.
So my, so my concern is, and you know, I love case studies and I've been talking about this for the last five years. You look at the patterns on where the drops are. These are areas that mostly lack apartments, they're homes. And you think, there is no lack of inventory in terms of whenever there's an opening, people are moving in. So I'm seeing like you talk about Edison, you know, there is mostly homes and, you know, I can see from my own neighbors, they're there, they're not moving. Their children have moved on. And I had asked several years ago to look at the projection of certain schools. And you see that because of this lack of development or affordable housing or apartments, we will see even a bigger drop in numbers. Because again, you look at Burbank and you look at Miller, there are apartments up there, you see this movement. What are you projecting in some of these areas, especially with some of these schools, especially the ones that don't have any apartments or, you know, it's mostly residential? And also, are we talking to the city in terms of targeting their next development projects? That will help our schools as well.
Historically, we had a demographer that did some of the out-year projections. So we've used some of that. We stopped using the demographer because we triangulate the data. We use information from our principals, instructional services, student services, quadrant, and then financial services. So we look at those trends, you're absolutely right. Where we're seeing the biggest decline are in areas where they can't have new development apartments. When we meet with the city, we talk about areas around the airport that are underdeveloped, that Gold Coast area, that would be a great opportunity to have enrollment increase there. You see the data where we have a lot of permits going in there. So we're having those conversations. We know some areas are maxed out, like you said, around Emerson and Burbank High. We don't need housing in those areas, but we do need housing in other parts of the city.
And if we are, and there will be any targeting development, will we be able to have those individuals come to some of these schools even though they're not nearby in terms of just getting a permit, if it's possible?
Well, that can, if there's, if families move with a cap, where you can't get into your neighborhood school, we do that. And then when there's an intra-district permit that we can place and like that. But we do want people in their neighborhood schools as much as possible.
It might also be good to circle back with our demographers, especially after the passage of SB 9 in this past legislative session with the Capitol, which allows R1 property, so basic, single-family homes, to be subdivided into duplex units. So that could very quickly, depending on foreign investment, which is happening, where an entire block gets bought up, flipped, and all of that's possible. And that could very quickly spike dramatically. So that's, that could influence district boundaries, things like that, that honestly may need to be a real conversation of which neighborhoods are more prone to have density spikes so we can anticipate and shift resources accordingly.
Well, and couldn't we look at recent development, like say, Talaria? That there were projections of how many students we might get from Talaria and how many actually did we get? And then there's several new projects going on. I can think of three offhand, four of new development. And what are the projections there? And then we should be watching to see what the actuals are.
I think it's also important to be in communication with the city in regards to affordable housing and how much of these new builds actually qualify for affordable housing? Because people who can afford to live in those places aren't leaving Burbank. It's people who can't, people like me. So I think that part of the conversation that we need to continue to have with the city is how much, how many of these units, some of, they legally have to have a certain number, but how much more above and beyond can we go? Because we know that to, to a large degree, people come to Burbank because of our school district. And so it's a symbiotic relationship and how we work hand in hand with the city and also whoever else, Realtors Association, whoever it might be, to try to advocate for a more affordable housing is going to be important. It's important, period. It's also important for the district.
Well, that's, to me, that's the conundrum, right? You have a quality school district, a quality city. So people want to move here. So you have not a lot of homes to choose from. So there's multiple people bidding on the same houses, which drives the prices up. That's the conundrum, right? You provide quality, people want to live here, prices go up. It's the supply and demand. So yes, you're right. It would be great to have more affordable housing and it's going to come in the form of these projects in apartment developments.
It'd be great just to have development, period. There isn't much, I mean, Talaria is a small project.
Well, and, and being real, like, we're looking at this problem and it's 519 students. So what also is interesting to me, and again, like, thinking outside the box, so don't throw a shoe at me yet. But again, like, we have to start asking, isn't it cost-effective to probably get an apartment building? And to, and to figure out how to lease that to families to increase enrollment? Like at $10,000 per student, right? Like, does that become cost-effective eventually if the, if the district becomes a housing provider? I know that's not our core mission, but also we are going to anticipate teachers being harder and so classified employees with wages not climbing, it's going to be harder to attract them to our district. Being able to afford that as a resource would allow us to attract folks and possibly stabilize enrollment. So, and it's a bond question. It would be a bond question potentially to get that kind of upfront resourcing to, again, does it solve 500? No. Could it solve 100? Could it solve 30? Could it, what could it solve? Is it viable? So. Concept. Just thinking creatively because that's what it's going to take.
It's a very interesting proposal.
We've talked about some space like at Horseman that we've had, putting, no, no, no. No, you always want to sell things and I want to use things to make continual money, not one-time money. But no, but to utilize it for tiny homes for, for staff members to lease from us, you know, on and on. It's, there's, and now with the new SB 19, nine. That's a, those are, those are good conversations to have. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have, yeah, I have to keep rolling, don't I? All right. Moving on to 12C, report on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion DEI Committee. Matt Hill and Stephanie McCoy, DEI consultant, will report on the progress of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Good evening. Good evening to the board and to staff. And congratulations, Michelleene Tabit, for your new role as president of the Burbank School Board. We have a lot on this presentation tonight, so I'm going to go through it. I'm going to go over the overarching goals and the goals throughout the slide and then I might pick some of the key components out of each slide. So our first slide here, we have our overarching goal. I wanted to read this out loud. The goal of DEI is to conduct a thorough audit of diversity, equity, inclusion, and BUSD and make recommendations regarding the future implementation of policy, practice, instruction, and engagement. Focus on long-term sustained work. Engage multiple stakeholder groups, including but not limited to students, teachers, certified staff, classified staff, administration, parents, and caregivers. Conduct formative and summative assessments focused on impact of DEI training, of teacher efficacy, and content changes. Conduct formative and summative assessments focused on impact of DEI training from student perspective. Provide regular updates to the Board of Ed regarding the achievement of said goals, addressing the culture and organization through research and assessment. So we have some key components here, I just want to mention a few. Our mission for DEI is to align Our mission for DEI is to align diversity strongly with the institution's mission is a cornerstone of this work. Diversity will remain marginal unless it's central to the core teaching of research and mission. Our culture takes longer to change. I know that we are looking at the DEI lens of organizational structure change and not just making implementations for situational work. So looking at the culture takes longer for the climate to change, but must be framed so that diversity can be facilitated rather than obstructed. Move on to instruction. I'll go over some of the instruction goals. Our first goal for instruction is identify gaps in the K through 12 social science curriculum and make recommendations for materials to make the instruction more inclusive. Some of the things we'll be doing is that myself will be working with secondary high school social science teachers on alignment at the next Social Science Task Force meeting in January 2022. Our second goal is to provide professional development for teachers and staff and create systems of sustainability for DEI work. Some of the work includes complete the first round of professional development for all teachers with facing history by May 2022. Worth work, work with instructional services and human resources to plan professional development for classified employees. Plan ready by May 2022. Work with human resources to design sustainability of the work by creating teacher leaders at every school site. Plan ready by May 2022. Third goal for instruction, increase diversity literature choices in classrooms, school libraries, and core literature. English teachers are working on six through 12 mapping of standards and will be making some recommendations for new diverse works by December 2021. We'll develop a process for adding books to the core and supplemental novel lists, first draft by January 2022. So here we want to make sure that we're including black voices, including BIPOC voices, including LGBT voices, including Armenian voices, including all of our marginalized voices through our literature and making sure that what we're teaching and the books that we're teaching is through the lens of those cultures represented. Goal four, make a recommendation for the adoption of ethnic studies course. Myself, I'll be, I will begin working with secondary school, history, social science teachers in the development of ethnic studies course at the next Social Science Task Force meeting in January 2022. I do want to add, I do have my curriculum in social science, so it'd be an added benefit for me to really utilize this and work with teachers and staff to ensure that our curriculum is inclusive and representative. We'll move on to policy. Policy goal one for policy, update curriculum, board policy, administrative regulations. By January 2022, board policy 6161 point 11, administrative regulation 6161 have been revised by the policy subcommittee and are being vetted so that it can be taken to the board for approval. For those unsure of the policy 6161, it is to ensure supplemental materials for education and curriculum. Goal two, to create open access board policy. By February 2022, present to the board a policy on open access for courses. Goal three, expand DEI trainings. By March 2022, develop and implement DEI training for individuals who participate in hiring panels. By April 2022, develop and implement DEI training for new substitute teachers hired into the district. We'll move on to engagement. Goal one for engagement, collect feedback from students, families, employees via surveys. By January 10th, launch surveys for students, families, and employees. By February 17th, present and review survey results and discuss next steps. So this one here for the surveys, we want to ensure that we're getting input from the community to seeing what their needs are, how can we meet them, and how can we be inclusive to what everyone wants? So we've so far drafted a survey for our employees. And we've branched through a focus group, we're getting last final edits from Dr. Weisberg, and we'll be sure to have those out by January as well. Goal two, integrate student-led DEI groups into programming. By February 2022, host a student panel focused on DEI. Goal three, strengthen collaboration and best practice sharing among school site PTA DEI committees. By April 2022, host a parent panel focused on sharing best DEI practice. I think this is great that we're going to have panels to ensure that we're getting all the voices, to ensure that in some ways it's a kind of like a town hall where everyone gets to come together, we get to hear what they need from parents, from teachers, from staff, and get to hear their voices, then they have a platform to share their needs. Goal three, strengthen collaboration and best practice sharing among school site PTA DEI committees. Goal four, share school and community-wide program across the district. By January 2022, Dr. Hill and myself will record and share a video that addresses the history of racism in Burbank, where we are now and where we're headed. So last week on the eighth, I believe, myself and Ms. Dr. Hill, we went to John Burroughs High School with the help of a student media team. We were able to record a district-wide video that is being edited and will be put out sometime next year. And it addresses kind of taking responsibility and accountability of the education we have here, some of the race, the racism that we have here and some of the discrimination that's happened through our education. So looking at the inequities and giving people an idea of where we are now, where we're going, and some of the goals we plan to accomplish to eradicate some of the discrepancies we have in our education. By May 2022, develop a centralized calendar app to share promote events across the district. And we have a couple more slides here, I'm just going to go quickly through them. This is just the ongoing DEI work that I'll continue to be doing. As mentioned before, I'll be working on the survey development for classified staff, faculty, teachers, students, and parents to understand and measure our organizational cultures, perceptions, values, and attitudes. I'll be working with instruction and teachers to develop supplemental materials, ethnic studies courses, and new lists of novels, ongoing professional development for teachers, staff, and faculty that we rolled out by January 2022. Post survey implementation, I'll also be auditing classrooms to better understand classroom engagement and the classroom climate. I'll point some out here as well, work collaboratively with the CTA to support ongoing work for employer resource group that is focused on diversity, equity, inclusion. I met with the CTA two weeks ago, met with the entire executive committee and shared some of our updates, shared what we're looking for, and also offer them to have a helping hand in how we're developing some of our materials as well. Next slide, please. So these are our last goals, some of our already mentioned, but I'll restate again. By June 30th, 2022, develop and oversee a comprehensive plan for diversity, equity, inclusion for all administrators, teachers, classified staff, students, and families, parents, guardians, under the direction of the superintendent. By June 30th, 2022, in consultation with the superintendent, coordinate and systemizes, systematizes where the ongoing responsibilities related to diversity, equity, and inclusion within the district will be housed assigned once the independent services contract expires. Lastly, promotes and communicates the DEI work being done through ongoing district-wide communications, marketing, and messaging. I think the last one is key, we want to make sure that throughout our process, we're offering transparency. I know that throughout the process, there will be questions in what we're doing and where we're headed and some of the things we're implementing. So providing full transparency through our website and communication materials would be really helpful. Thank you.
Comments from the board? Questions? Mr. Ferguson?
First of all, thank you. We ask for more specificity, more detail, check, thank you. Smart goals are the way we should be presenting information. So that way we can demonstrate to the public, we're being accountable as we talk about our budget crisis, right? One of the things I will say, I think all of these steps are necessary. I think all these steps are important. I, I'm worried about an approach I don't see as much, and that is student leadership in this moment. I joined public service when this city got together a group of young people and said, hey, young people, here are problems, how would you solve them? When that happened, it set youth policy in this city for the next decade. We created a television show that won Emmys, we created a teen transportation program. And when I'm seeing and hearing things, especially from the LGBTQ community on both of our sites, they don't feel safe. And a survey, I don't think is the right tool to understand the depth of that, to understand where that lack of security is coming from. And so I really believe that that is best done peer to peer. You are a professional, you may have other experiences. I also don't like the idea of hiring just a, you know, an outside challenge day-esque, every 15 minutes-esque consultant to come in and have a feel-good day either. This, I think, needs to model as we, yes, we need to do the structural changes, the policy changes. But what I'm hoping for is that we can get a little bit more creative with student outreach and draw up a plan for the spring semester that, again, is the ongoing, what is the link crew equivalent for the ongoing conversation about race-based issues or belonging on campus? What is the ongoing institution? As opposed to why do we have to go research whatever is every year and what is invoked? So if we could figure out a path forward there, I think that that one gives us a more informed pathway to safety for the kids we're trying to protect the most, and not just LGBTQ kids, right? We aren't listening enough, we are doing, since you have joined, you have sat down with a number of people, you are, you are out there and you're hustling, right? But, but I think everyone wants to be a part of this conversation at some level, especially the students. So if we just pass a bunch of policies and like you said, kind of pass over the cultural issues, which involves listening, I'm, I'm a little worried. So I just would like to see a plan come back, at least in the spring semester, again, focusing. There is a, a group of LGBTQ students who want to organize a group to talk about issues on campus. I think we should be facilitating those moments. And, and again, surveys are one tool, but I think proactive student outreach and empowering them to be a part of solution making and creating is, is a part of our solution.
Can I respond as well? I think you're absolutely right. I think it'd be great to create a plan, although we don't have a plan. Dr. Paramo and I weekly meet with student groups, weekly. We meet with BSU, we meet with LGBTQ Gay Straight Alliance, and we hear their voices. We make document reports and ensure that we're including some of the things that we need. Most recently, we met with LGBTQ students involved in the incident that was happening and had an intervention. We asked them what their needs were, we asked them what their demands were and what they were protesting for. We're now meeting those needs and creating goals for those needs.
And I love, and, and I'm celebrating that because that, that's an important step. But what becomes a challenge is when we only have two people who can cultivate that conversation. And when we have to keep relying on those two people to maintain relationships with students and make sometimes deals that you can't make, frankly, to maintain the kind of trust that we need them to share. So I don't doubt that that's a good tool. What I want to say though is again, let's differentiate how we're approaching student engagement. Because I think there's, there's a lot of leadership that's untapped there.
Dr. Weisberg.
Hello. I think something that can begin to address some of Mr. Ferguson's points. I think, maybe I'm making it up that we talked about this because I don't remember anymore, but even if it's a redacted document, but making available to board members the conversation, some of the, the things that you were gleaning from those weekly meetings with students, I think could be really helpful and informative in letting us know, okay, so what are some action items? What are some areas that we can be proactively addressing or looking at? Obviously, you're not going to want to share everything because I'm sure that there's an assumption of, of privacy as there should be. But I think if there's something that can be made available to the board that, that we can check out and say, oh, that's really interesting, you know, this is interesting, that came out of like the Gay Straight Alliance or whatever it might be, I think that could be really helpful because I know that we've talked about this, like that our DEI work can get so siloed often because there's so many subcommittees and there's so much happening. And so it often, we've talked about this, like it's hard to even get a, a feeling because so much is going on. Hence like a PowerPoint that's like chock full of stuff, which, good stuff. So I think it could be really helpful to share with the board, just a sort of a breakdown. This is what we're seeing, this is what we're hearing, and then that allows us to come on the ride with you and ask maybe some more informed questions. So if you and Dr. Paramo feel comfortable so doing, I think that could be a good start to, to some of the things that Mr. Ferguson is bringing up.
Sounds great.
Teamwork.
Dr. Agarwati.
Good evening, Stephanie. I thank you for a wonderful presentation. I also want to take this opportunity to thank all the members of the DEI Committee, some of them I see in the back.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you. Some viewers don't know, this has been ongoing for almost two and a half years. So I'm, I'm very happy that where we are, I, I love this presentation, I love the points that you're making. And I think, you know, from beginning, we knew this is going to be a challenging process, but I think what I'm seeing right now, it's fantastic. And, and, and I love the promotion part of it as, as well as the ongoing part of it as well. But also this whole concentration on literature, that, that is so important to me, you know? And, and I think culture itself, you know, and literature, you know, go hand in hand. So I'm here, if you ever need any help as well, you know, let me know, but I really liked the presentation. And I love what you've accomplished so far, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Agarwati.
Thank you, Dr. Agarwati, anyone else? Doctor, Mr. Mr. Fretner?
Yeah, I, I don't want to take much time because my colleagues have covered a lot of areas that I, I talked about. I just, thanks again for the presentation and I'm very happy to see, you've obviously had a lot on your plate and, you know, and moving forward very quickly, but there's, as you said, it's got to be, the structural changes have got to, you know, keep moving forward, it can't just be policy. And this has very quickly, because a lot of this is going to be happening in the next month, you know, to six weeks, you know, to make, you know, progress on those structural changes, that's what I'm really happy to see. I, I do agree with Mr. Ferguson, we need to find a way to involve our students. That's something we heard in the past from our students that, you know, that we aren't hearing them enough, so. But I, I, I really, I think this looks like a great plan and a lot of great moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fretner. Mr. Fretner.
On behalf of myself, thank you for the report. It was much more in line with what I was hoping to see, so thank you for that. And I love that you have dates, end goal dates, so I think that's appreciative. I would like, if you could send me, and I don't know if anybody else wants it, but an outline of your work on a history of racism in Burbank. I'd like to see, you know, the, the time, not the timeline, the, the storyline on what's going to be presented in that, if you could send that to me. I, I'd appreciate it. Otherwise, I think, Dr. Hill, well?
I was just gonna, we, we just sat down and had an unscripted dialogue. So just to, we didn't have a script. So what, we, we went over to John Burroughs High School and we had two of our video production students just film us and we started talking, we had some, well, we have some high-level topics. I'll send you the high level, but there wasn't like a detailed script. We just reflected on what Stephanie, her reflection and observation in Burbank, mine coming as a superintendent, the work that we've done, the anti-racist statement, and where we're going at a high level. Because we want to, we wanted to model just how to have these conversations and dialogues. In our engagement subcommittee, students have talked about doing the same thing. So we wanted to have this one and then we'll have more panels. So just, I just, I didn't want you to be waiting for some detailed timeline, we have some bullet points on script.
So when you talk about a history of racism in Burbank, you're talking about the work you've done here at the school district.
I can add in.
Personal observations and reflections.
Yeah, just some policies can, and more specifically the sundown policy, some of the housing practices back in the 50s. So we kind of took a timeline of back in the 50s policies, what've kind of led to some of the areas of discrimination here, where we are and where we're headed. There's a detailed outline that I created for Matt and I, we can send that to you.
What I think is so important about that too, number one, I think a casual dialogue is powerful, but also I think we all agree that the first step in really beginning a process of like healing is an acknowledgement of what was wrong and the wrongs that had been committed. And we have a long way to go with that, but I think that conversation, I know we've spoken about that, Dr. Hill, and also we've talked about that idea of sitting down and having this honest conversation is a great first step and then paving the way for our students to have conversations. So I for one, I'm really excited, I can't wait to see it. And I think it's, I think it's going to be really impactful and important.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Finally, moving on to 13, request to address the board. 13A is public communication on agenda items. An individual or group representative may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or subject within its jurisdiction by completing a blue request card. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker, except by unanimous consent of the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. The district has a new procedure for requests to address the board. Public communication on agenda items, you've heard this before. Comments must pertain to public session items on this agenda. Please complete a white request card. Public communications on a subject within the jurisdiction of the school board. If your comment does not pertain to an item on tonight's agenda, you may comment regarding any subject within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education during the final section of public communication. Please complete a blue request card. Superintendent and board comment will also now take place during the final response to public communication. Okay. So, these are in a certain particular order. So I have one white card, thank you for your guidance. So I have one white card, thank you for your guidance, I definitely need that. At this time, I have one card, it's for Joel Schlossman, who is going to be speaking on item, agenda item number 14G. Mr. Schlossman.
Good evening, everybody. Congratulations, thank you all for your service. I also want to talk about something else, but it's an agenda item as well, it's oral communications. What you've done here tonight is horrible by making people wait to the end. People walked out, the lady with kids and another group of people. It's not right, it's just not right.
Thank you, Mr. Schlossman, but that's not an agenda item.
It is, number four on your agenda. I'm talking about public communications, oral communications. I'll pause while you look that up. I'm speaking about oral communications and oral communications is an agenda item.
I, I'm going to let it go, but I think the ideas behind an agenda item that we're going to actually vote on or, yeah, not necessarily something that is part of the agenda so that people can follow along to know where we are. But we won't argue that case at this time, please continue.
Well, it's, you know, it's.
Can you stop his five minutes and since I interacted with him and let him have another five minutes to start, so go right ahead.
You know, as politely as I can say it to you, Ms. Tabit, go back to the way we had it because it's a small thing to ask to let people talk. It's important that people are able to speak and not speak late at night. What you, the presentations that you had, first of all, you should have read these reports in advance, this shouldn't have been the first time. And you could, you could have done this later in the evening and let people speak about the various topics that concern. It's wrong to make people wait to the end. My son wants to speak to you about something and he's got to wait till the end and it's a very small matter, maybe one minute of your time, and many of the speakers don't use the whole five minutes. Okay, you know, I'm not going to belabor the point, I'm going to talk more about this on the blue card as well, but I am allowed to talk about this because this is an agenda item, communications is an agenda item. Now, I wanted to talk about minimum wage. It's really an offensive term, minimum. Are you, are you with me now on the agenda item of wages? Okay, yeah. You know, our employees who are getting minimum wage, some of them are very important, they watch over our children, they're yard workers, they're watching the kids move out in the street. I consider them essential. And minimum wage, it's insulting to give somebody that and you should be giving them a little bit more. And when you look at the superintendent and what he's done, costing this district hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars with his poor choices, I'm talking about employee settlements, being sued left and right. I'm talking about him creating new positions, you tell us you're broke, you talk about not having money, yet he's creating new positions. But you've got the minimum wage for so many of our important, our vitally important workers that keep our kids safe. So do something about it and go beyond the minimum wage for our employees. You know, look at what it is, and you're not being noble, you're being forced to raise it because it's state law. I know nothing I say ever has any effect because you go with what the superintendent does, it's gospel, what comes out of his mouth. I wish that some of you would challenge him and make changes that need to be made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that's the only white card I have. Thank you very much, we'll move on to staff responses.
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you, Mr. Schlossman. I 100% agree, we should not be paying our employees minimum wage. We had lengthy conversations through two parcel tax campaigns about the funding that Burbank Unified School District receives. Compensation was part of the parcel tax in Measure I. Unfortunately, we only had 64% of our community that supported that, we needed 66. We will continue to look at ways to compensate our employees fairly, but as you heard earlier, the report on declining enrollment, state mandated increased pension costs are just two of the main drivers right now. We are going to continue to advocate for fair policies that you can fund public education and pay our employees what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. 13C, board members' responses. Mr. Fritner?
Thank you. As Dr. Hill stated, we would all love to pay more than minimum wage, but I find it ironic that someone who fought us so incredibly hard over trying to provide more revenue has now the audacity to come and tell us how much we should be, how hard we should be working to pay our people more. You mentioned, you know, positions we may have added, you didn't mention all the positions that have been cut in the last several years as we tried to save money in the district, as we had to, to fit in our budget. So I'm sorry, your words don't really mean much on this topic because they're not valid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fritner, Dr. Agakanyan, anything? Okay. Dr. Weisberg, Mr. Fritner. All right, thank you. Moving on to 14, new and or unfinished business. 14A, approval of board representation on district and community committees groups for 2022. The president of the Board of Education recommends that the members of the board, what's that?
I think that's what we make the motion.
Oh, yeah, please do. I forget when I'm supposed to read and when I'm not supposed to read.
President Tabit.
Mr. Fritner.
As long as I'm talking. I move that the Board of Education determine and approve the list of board representation on committees groups for 2022 as presented.
Thank you for the motion, do I have a second?
I have a different concept I'd like to offer, but.
Okay, but we have a motion on the floor.
I'm working on it, that's why I'm explaining I'm not seconding it.
Okay.
I just want to hear, I want to hear the idea.
We can't until we finish this motion, so he can bring it up.
Or I can wait.
I just need a second.
Second for the State of Congress.
Thank you.
For conversation.
So now, we have a, yes, we have a motion and a second discussion. Now, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you so much. You know, communication, communication, communication continues to be a priority escalated by the community. And I think that that's really, I think we do spend a lot of time attempting to communicate, but the systems that are designed by education at times are complicated, weird, non-responsive, slow, and very challenging. Having said that, we have an obligation still to be as transparent and communicative as possible and to make our systems as streamlined as possible. The community college system in California is mandated by AB 1725 to have a system of what's called shared governance. It requires all main district committees to have representation of all groups, with the exception of parents. Parents are not a part of the community college system in the same way, but the academic senate, the classified employees, the certificated employees, and the administration. This creates a codependency frankly, that forces you to work together to build policy solutions. And so what I've typed up is just kind of an overflow, overview of how I think we can reorganize some of our committee work. Because I think, you know, for instance, DEI is fantastic, but there is academic components to DEI, there are capital components to DEI, and there are student experience components to DEI. All of those deserve equal time and weight, and to me, I think we should be breaking down the work differently. So what I put together, which I can pass out, I don't know, did staff put them in the, so they just kept them with me? Got it, okay. That makes me keeping it away from the public. Can you pass that so we can get that out to the public? Communication. So what this would fundamentally do is align our committee structure around three major committees, academic affairs, student affairs, and capital affairs. Any policy related change would move through our existing agenda review process for consideration. Any new program would run through either the new fundraising protocol or go through ALCAP, which is what is supposed to be happening. I think this organizes the work a little bit better. Board members would serve as co-chairs of these standing committees and help move the work along at the priority of the community. And again, some of the committees that we have currently in existence would collapse under these new committees. So we are, again, kind of a one-stop shop. This is a lot to take in, in one conversation and just here, so I wanted to offer it as a potential place to start with discussions, if there's interest in kind of broadening how we do committee work to try and bring in additional stakeholders to the committee work process. And again, just offering this as a place to start, hoping that we can do some version of this.
Thank you. And I see, I mean, a lot of work and time and energy went into this and a lot of thought. I'm wondering if this is something we could bring to our governance?
Agenda review?
Study session?
Study session coming up, so we could have a better, because then it would be part of that and we could talk about it.
Thanks for creating the time for it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good way to go at this moment. I don't think that it prohibits us from putting board members in those committee spots.
Can I ask that we just hold current assignments until we have this conversation?
Sure, sure. Be happy to, because we can always change, you know?
That's correct.
Doesn't, nothing's written in stone, so.
And if this isn't, I mean, we can do that at the same meeting, so if this works, great, and then we can assign, if not, great.
Because then it gives us time to read through it, think about it, and then really discuss it at that study session.
Yeah.
If that's all right.
And everybody can, yeah.
Are we, are you okay with that?
Absolutely, thank you.
And everybody else is all right with that? Okay. So then even, so then we do have a motion and a second, so we can.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, we could withdraw or table it until we.
Table the motion.
Okay, so we are tabling motion 14A.
To the study session.
Yes, yes, so. Okay. Good, all right. Any questions?
No.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Moving on then to 14B, approval of educator effectiveness block grant.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir.
I will move the Board of Education to approve the district's educator effectiveness block grant effective July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2026, as presented.
Second.
Shouldn't show?
This is the second reading, so the first reading, I did the PowerPoint and the presentation and there were no changes.
Great.
So, any question? Okay. All in favor then of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, the motion was passed, the motion was made, and Mr. Ferguson, and seconded by?
Weisberg.
Weisberg, and it passed with a.
A corner pocket.
Five votes. Okay. 14C, adoption of Resolution 17.
Concerning continued funding for the California State Preschool Program for the 2022-23 school year.
President Tabit.
Yes, sir.
I will move the Board of Education to adopt Resolution 17, certifying approval of the Board of Education to enter into a transaction with the California Department of Education for funding of child development programs effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023, and that the authority to sign the agreements be exercised pursuant to BUSD AR 3314, as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Ferguson, and the second, Dr. Agakanyan. Any discussion? Okay, not seen any. Board members in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, please say no. Motion was carried with a five vote, thank you. 14D, adoption of Resolution 18 for fiscal stabilization plan.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move the Board of Education to adopt Resolution 18 for fiscal, for the fiscal stabilization plan, as presented.
Second.
I think I heard Dr. Agakanyan make the second. Thank you for the motion, Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion?
Is there a presentation with this?
I don't think so.
Or is that the next?
I think we can roll it into first interim.
Yeah.
There's no presentation, this is just a requirement because the third year out, we have a deficit, without adopting this, we are not above water.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Moving on to 14E, approval of first interim report for 2021-22 fiscal year. Ms. Cutka.
Good evening again. We're here to present, as President Tabit mentioned, the first interim report for 2021-22. And I'd like to thank our fiscal services team we have with us tonight, Alyssa Lowe, who's our fiscal services director, and Karen Watland is not here tonight, but has been working very diligently, she's our assistant supervisor of budget and finance, and the entire fiscal team, they've got absences, vacancies in their department, and they have absorbed those, and first interim is quite a project when you go to close the book, so I want to make sure to thank them and recognize them for all their hard work. So if we could get the PowerPoint. Our agenda tonight, we're going to look at the budget process, our budget assumptions for revenues and expenditures, contributions, the multi-year projection, and some of the challenges that we're looking at ahead. The next slide shows the budget cycle, so last June, you all adopted our 2021-22 budget, and we're now looking at our first interim report, which is our financials through October 31st. You'll notice the due date is December 15th, but because of the way our board meetings fall, we did get approval from the Los Angeles County Office of Education to make sure that we file that tomorrow. They already have the report, but we'll just finalize it with a signature.
Great.
So when we're looking at our interim reports, we certify them as either positive, qualified, or negative, and because of the action that you took with the previous resolution, we are able to get a positive certification on this interim report. So starting out with some good news on this next slide, which is very busy, but the Legislative Analyst Office, the LAO, issued very bright, a very bright forecast and increased funding for K-12. So they're looking at a very robust revenue projection, a $31 billion budget surplus, but then you look at that and we have the GAN limit that's in place. So the GAN limit was a 1979 proposition that limited us to 78, 79 expenditures with inflation tagged in, and we can't, we have to, we can't spend more than that, the state is looking at that. What that translates to the district is that we either get, K-12 over the next three years gets an additional $13 billion, or they may choose to spend it on capital outlay. So this is one of those things where I don't know if the governor's going to come through and say something in January, we'll just be watching that very closely. So it could be added money, and sometimes that money comes with strings, so we're, it depends on what we're looking at there. Proposition 98, if you look at the graph to the right, you can see we're looking at Prop 98 funding and we are under test one. So when you look at the blue bars, which is the budget that came through, the LAO actually has come through and we're in the positive there, and you can see the Prop 98 funding is continuing to grow. So we have a rosier outlook than what the budget proposed. Local school district budgets and COLA, so when you're looking at the COLA, the LAO actually increased the COLA for next year. It was initially at 2.48%, and they're saying we're going to get 5.35% because of what they call a meteoric spike in inflation. So that is much rosier though, we did not build that into the budget because School Services and LACO has told us that we need to leave it at the original estimate, but there's a potential here for some additional monies next year. The Proposition 98 Reserve and Local Reserve Cap, I think we've had the conversation before where they can cap the reserves at 10% if reserves at the state level get to a certain level, so that is something that we're going to be living with for a while. So we just need to be very careful that we designate whatever fund balances we have so they can't claw that back. Looking at district pension. and I think Dr. Hill has talked about those before, but two of the ones that I wanted to bring to your attention is equalizing LCFF add-ons to increase general purpose funding, which would be good, or they've, again, paying down that pension liability. So that would be huge for us. And you could see a quote there that School Services is talking about, you know, they'll have, the governor, when he releases the budget next month, has the potential, he's got one more month of revenues. So we're hoping that that's even a rosier projection. We'll be definitely watching that. So those are all kind of rosy news, but when you look at the next slide, we talk about the fiscal cliff. So the legislature had its first discussion regarding the financial NDA cliff back on November 30th, and that hold harmless provision, which we've talked about, and I believe you mentioned tonight, Mr. Ferguson, goes away. So we're going back to our enrollment. We've been held harmless the last couple of years, and next year, reality sets in, and we'll go through in the few, in a few sides, we'll look at what our budget enrollment was based on. And that, that drives our LCFF revenue, which is our biggest source of revenue. Legislators are looking at how we can do a soft landing, because that fiscal cliff is pretty severe, as you'll see when we look at the multi-year projection. So there's many options that they're out there that they're talking about, using a three-year rolling average for ADA, for average daily attendance, or bulking up the LCFF base grant in '22, '23, or perhaps using enrollment instead of ADA. And I think the consensus on that is it really doesn't do anything for districts. It's, it just isn't helpful. So we'll look and see, you know, really critical to look in January to see what the, what the governor comes out with. So the next slide shows the Proposition 98 funding. You can see on an increasing tier with the green graph, but offset by the huge decline in attendance. When you see the kind of, when you talk about a cliff falling off. So the Department of Finance, and this kind of goes to your point earlier, as you were wondering, wanting comps with other districts, the Department of Finance is looking at California K-12 enrollment to decline by 8.7% by 2031. So it, it's not just Burbank that's experiencing this. And in talking with my peers at other districts, say, for example, in the Joint Power Authority, everybody is experiencing roughly the same, a similar percentage decrease. So we'll see the numbers next month when we look at that. So moving on to the revenues, we've got, we're looking at our unaudited actuals for the last fiscal year compared to the adopted budget for this fiscal year, '21, '22, and at our first interim numbers. And you'll see a 21% increase between our adopted budget and our first interim, which are mainly in the areas of the federal revenue and other state revenues, and that's additional one-time COVID monies mainly that has come in. And you'll see also our gifts and other local revenues, the gifts have increased when we're looking at our first interim projected amounts for this fiscal year. The next slide shows the revenue drivers. So as you look at the LCFF cost of living adjustment, here is where you can see where the Department of Finance differs from what LACO is instructing districts to use. And in '22, '23, you see where the DOF, because of their rosy economic picture, dropped, went up to the 5.35%. We are at this time sticking with that 2.48%, and then we're, it's a little bit on par when you go out to '23, '24. The base grant for student, you can see the dollar amounts for K-3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9 through 12. We obviously get more money for high school students. And then our average daily attendance. And so here's the key figure, because this is deriving what our LCFF revenues are. Ms. Lowe can tell you that, in running through the, it's a massive Excel document where you put in all kinds of data, and it tells you what amount of money you're getting. These are the numbers that we were using. So an average daily attendance, as compared with enrollment, we usually use a factor of 96%. So 4% of our students are not in class on any given day. The next slide, we had mentioned about the, the big increase in revenues this year over the originally adopted budget. You can see the COVID monies that we've received, that we've used. I think Dr. Hill has led us, and we've used very strategically to kind of offset and support the general fund, but to the tune of $47 million. So that's, when you think about it, that's a massive amount to receive in a short period of time and to spend, you know, wisely. So I think we've done a really good job. We've got, you know, some monies are still left to be received, and then you can see in the third column, the dates, that last column, the dates that the monies have to be spent by. And I do want to say, earlier this week, we received notice that our FEMA grant application is going to be funded. So that originally was approved because we were hoping that the testing was going to continue through December 31st, and obviously we cut that short because FEMA kept, you know, dragging their feet, and we didn't want to overextend. The grant that was approved was 4.9 million. But, and what that will do for us is we have 2 million, that is 2 million, 2.7 million that is in the COVID one-time monies, that's a set aside, that will free up that funding that we can use for something else. So that was really good news earlier this week. The next slide shows the impact of declining enrollment on supplemental grant funding. So supplemental funding is received for students who are English learners, receive free or reduced-price meals, and our foster youth. So when you look at the, the chart, you can see where our percentage is dropping. And a lot of that can be attributed to the fact that we are, we don't, the applications really aren't required, we're freeing every kid for free, every kid. So they're not, you know, and that drives, unfortunately, the supplemental grant formula, and it drives off the E-rate discount that we get when we, you know, use those funds to leverage for technology, infrastructure expenditures. So this was really critical, and we've done what we can. The district has done phone calls and outreach to try to get people. This would be another great thing to get hold harmless on, though, because every district is in the same boat. So this next page is a bar graph. It's a little bit of a different presentation of what Dr. Paramo presented earlier as far as enrollment. So looking over this three-year period, you can see where overall we are declining. The inter-district permits do help offset that, but even when countering those in, and even with the increase in '21, '22, we are still declining. So moving on to our expenditures, again, we're comparing unaudited actuals from last fiscal year to our adopted budget, and then our first interim numbers this year and what the projections look like for the year. And again, on the expenditure side, it's mirroring the increase in revenues, where you can see the books and supplies and our services and other operating expenditures have been mainly increased due to COVID-related expenditures using that funding. So the next slide shows the expenditure drivers. So again, favorite topic is purs and stirs, and you can just see the incredible increase over this three-year period with, and it just purs, that 27.1%, that's 27% of salaries that we're having to contribute. So that, again, is a huge area where, you know, if we could get the state, when they're talking about mitigations and trying to, you know, help districts, weather this fiscal cliff would be huge. And then the second chart shows our special education contribution, which you can see increasing. And Paul Ekos, who's our special ed director, has talked about the special ed numbers increasing. So this, you know, as we look at what's driving this, we'll have, we'll have to, and do what we can to keep those costs down, but we need to take care of those kids. And then just some of the miscellaneous assumptions. And I don't know if you'll remember from last fiscal year with the unemployment insurance rate, they bumped us up from 0.05% up to 1.23%, and I get, they really got their cages rattled, so they dropped it back down to the 0.5%, which is much more affordable, but still significantly more than what we were contributing. Health insurance increases pretty standard at the 2% increase every year, and then you can see the California CPI, which is applied towards all our expenditures to increase that. The next slide shows our expenditure differences and just, you know, some of the, the couple that I'd like to point out is, again, the stirs and purs increases, and then our one-time COVID funding expenditures are really what's driving that increase. Slide 16 shows our contributions to other funds and other resources. Here you can see the special ed again, which is on the increase all the way up to $24.5 million when you're looking at '23, '24. Routine restricted maintenance is 3% of expenditures, so you can see as expenditures, they, it's going to track along with the expenditure increase. And our district rentals revenue, which offsets those. So that is really our parking lot that is behind Providencia, which unfortunately, we are losing that tenant. They've, they're moving on and have canceled the lease December 31st, so that parking lot, we will lose that revenue stream. But we also have rented the house on LAMER, so that, that has increased, which is good Then looking at some of the miscellaneous funds, aside from the general fund, so you've got our Adult Education Fund, Child Development Fund, and the Child Nutrition Fund, only one fund, Fund 12, where we're having to transfer money in to cover a deficit. So, and that is mainly due to ATB, but you can see where the fund balances on all of those are healthy, so that is a good sign.
Question, Ms. Cutka.
Yes, absolutely.
On, especially these funds, can you clarify if, like, for instance, the Adult Education Fund, I know historically the board, in times of fiscal strife, has borrowed from that fund. Do we have to borrow, or can we, we can take?
We can borrow. We cannot take.
Okay. So it has, it, it's a loan.
Yeah. And in fact, if you remember back in June when we did the budget adaption...
Yeah.
You authorized us to be able to borrow cash. So if we have a cash flow problem, say, in the, in the general fund, we can move that money over to offset that temporarily, and there's restrictive payback rules where it has to be paid back, depending on when the loan happens, by the end of the fiscal year, or it can carry over.
So there is no way that Adult Education can do profit sharing with general fund?
Not that I'm aware. We can, I can ask around, but not that I'm aware, Dr. Hill.
Okay.
Good question.
I'll slide the box.
Creative, innovative, right.
Ms. Cutka, I had a question.
Yeah.
So, so I know that there are, the state is coming with some surplus again.
Yes. 31, yeah.
So are we projecting anything in that we might achieve additionally?
You know, going back to that slide, talking about the rosy projections, it could mean as much as $13 billion to K-12, and that would be paid over a three-year period. Again, strings or no strings, we don't know. But they can also take that out of the whole bucket, for the reserve bucket, and, and do capital expenditures. And so we really, again, that's probably another lobbying effort that could be made to our legislators and the governor to say, you know, please send it to districts.
Senator, the budget...
So. Any more questions before we go on? Okay. So the heart of really the budget process is the multi-year projection. So, and that is probably a good idea and one that is very prudent, is to do projections based on different assumptions, one of the key ones being enrollment, and maybe taking it in increments of 500, and what does it look like, and how much cuts would we need to be to, to keep our reserves at the, to exceed the minimum requirement. You can see in '23, '24, this is the reason for resolution 18 that you passed, is we're projected on here for $6,250,000 that we would need to cut. The resolution was up to $7 million, just to allow a little cushion. Another thing that you'll notice in '21, '22 is we have restricted one-time state and federal funding of $7 million. That goes away the following year because we will have spent it. The reason we set it aside for fund balance is the, so that everyone would understand that that money, it's not available to spend because it's committed. If we were to have spent that, we would be worse under water. So.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
This is something I flagged when I was going over this. So how many more years is the job study?
You know, it's in their house.
I mean, is there, is there a point, and I know it's not the biggest budget line, right, but is there a point where, I don't know, at the 15-year mark, we say?
So we negotiated with CSCA yesterday, and they assured with us that the job study information packets will be going out to all members by the end of this week so that they can review it over the holidays. It's a large process through CSCA. They'll have to have a chapter meeting to share the presentation, allow members to ask questions before it can go out to a vote. But the next step is imminent, right? That the, the information is going out to members for their review so that they, they can hold their meetings in January for votes.
I'm really happy to hear that we're, that we're at that step.
Me, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I will say, though, in working with our IT Director, Rick Fong, is we are really struggling to hire two analyst positions. And I had a conversation with the city's IT Director Friday, and he was saying that really we need to benchmark those salaries against the city and other alternative, and other options. There, obviously, these people can go anywhere, they're in high demand, and they're calling the shots. So unfortunately, the job study probably now is, I don't, I don't know what, when the salaries were looked at, but maybe inadequate and for sure in that IT area. So. And one thing I wanted to share in the discussion about the housing with the city is, gosh, and I think it's been about a year that I attended a public meeting that the Community Development Department held for the city, and there's a housing plan that covers the area of the downtown area, crosses the, the 5 freeway and goes to Victory, and thousands of new housing units, which would be a plus for enrollment, and they're focused on workforce housing, affordable housing, and that would be a huge impact. Interestingly, they used our developer, developer fee study to try to look at what the growth might be. But that's an area that we really need to look at, and I think when you're, and it would be good probably for you all to reach out to the counterparts with the city, because that is their focus.
What about the Fries?
Fries is another project. That's not this project area, but Fries is another area that...
For viewers also, can you tell, we do also get money for development.
Yeah, we get, there's different rates based on residential or commercial, but we do get a significant amount of revenue. And it goes in the growth fund. That, it has to be used, though, for adding facilities to accommodate the additional growth.
Only, only capital expenses to accommodate the growth.
Yeah.
At the school side, it affects.
But it wouldn't help the $6 million deficit.
No, it's not. And my other question is, again, I don't want to play devil's advocate, but, you know, we're getting all this money from the federal government, which we generally don't because of COVID.
Correct.
In reality, if we hadn't gotten any of this, where would have been, as of today?
We would have been having to continue to make cuts. Yeah, this bought us some time, and the, and the, and the state was talking, and the LAO talking about a soft landing that allowed us a softer landing, but again, it catches up with us with that fiscal cliff. So. And then on the last line, you'll see, and I, I bring this up every time, and, and I, and I often receive arguments coming back that 17% is a fund balance, it's just not realistic. However, just to, again, drive home, that's eight weeks of appropriations, which is not much when you think about it. That's like eight months, eight weeks' worth of savings. And what we have now, that 3% really doesn't cover a payroll. So it is a little bit scary when you, when you look at that.
We have 6%, we have 6%.
We have 6% now. There's the 3% plus the board. Yeah. So. And then slide 19 has the challenges. So again, we're looking at that ongoing structural deficit. We also have adopted that fiscal stabilization plan, which we appreciate you adopting. And we've already made several million dollars of cuts. So for example, in 2019, 20, we cut 3.8 million, and in 2020, 21, we, we cut 4.5 million. So we've already, I mean, that's, that's a huge portion. It really decimates our programs, our people. So I, you know, how you look at that and what that kind of leads to the next bullet's point is, with salaries and benefits adding up to 83% of the budget, at some point, it, it's going to affect staffing levels. And I will share, the Budget Advisory Committee, though, spent a meeting discussing class sizes, and really, the consensus was they did not want to cut class sizes, but that there's room to manage better, and I think we've done that a little bit better, is manage up to that 30.5 that is the negotiated maximum size, average class size across the district. So this, and again, we've talked about the state's hold harmless that is going away, that it really has protected us the last couple of years, and then looking at that free meal service that is going to affect our supplemental grant and our E-rate discount. So those are going to be some of the challenges that we're looking at. And with that, that's the end of the presentation, and happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Cutka. Anyone have an additional question? Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, as always. This is a lot of work, so again, just thank you, and making sure we have a fairly comprehensive understanding of, of kind of the 80 challenges coming for us in the tall grass. So I, I think, you know, one of the things we requested or we agendized is additional study sessions moving forward. There's a few reasons for that. Obviously, March 15th, we own positions after March 15th, so any discussions really need
Thank you, Ms. Kaka, anyone have an additional question, Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, as always, this is a lot of work, so again, just thank you, and, and making sure we have a fairly comprehensive understanding of, of kind of the 80 challenges coming for us in the tall grass, so, I, I think, you know, one of the things we requested, or we agendized, is additional study sessions moving forward, there's a few reasons for that, obviously, March 15th, we own positions after March 15th, so any discussions really need to happen prior to that, so, and we come out of break, and we're already halfway through January, it gets to be crunch time very quickly, and this is not a budget, I think, where we can afford to just survive, we need to start making structural changes, I think that's, for us as a board, to really work through, but to kind of start the work in the study sessions, what I hope is that we can kind of convey tonight some priorities. One, potentially, you know, what does a budget look like that gets reserves to 10% over the next five years? Understanding that we can, we do, there is no backup, and, and the need to raise that is significant, what does it look like to get to 12%? What does that, just what does that look like? Second, I've previously talked about a compensation plan, again, how we are targeting salaries, how we are building for salaries in the long term, it, we may need to be doing, cutting, to, to add for the long term, or to remain competitive for the long term, while, I mean, it's a multifaceted solution, we have to augment, we have to augment enrollment, period, so the dual enrollment, I think, is a big part of that, I think the middle college process, and that we've put aside funding to try and explore, could be a part of that solution. Returning enrollment, let's say that makes out 20%, we still have 400 or so to make up, so, you know, cutting 2 million, 3 million, maybe handles 200 of that, 300 of that, right? So this is where, it's manageable, but it's hard, and it's getting increasingly so, so, for instance, also exploring, we, we did a little bit with the career centers, or, you know, again, like, attendance specialists, can that be consolidated to one central core place, I don't know, and, and when I say this, I'm not trying to devalue anybody's role, but we are at a point where we, we have to cut, and we have to stabilize this budget, or else the cuts will be much more severe than our kids deserve. So, so first, again, so, revenue, building, building reserves to a 10 or 12% over a period of time that's doable, second, a compensation plan of some sort, just those two, I think.
We may need to have a, a more specialized report for the study sessions, and maybe looking at, by department, what that department costs in salaries.
Maybe important to look at FTEs and the salary costs.
Yes, kind of, be able to break that down, and able to see, compartmentalize, you know, where, where the money's going, and then what cuts would look like to that, you know, you kind of need to know the, the ground, and then how to build from there, so if we could have that by our, for our study session, which is coming in February or March?
February.
February.
That, that's not a lot of time between that and March 15th, so if we could get docs as soon as possible on, on the study session, just so we could, you know, proactively engage with staff in, you know, behind the scenes, contrary to, we, we do challenge one another, we do, you know, but it is in a lot of the subcommittee work, so, and, and also that the budget subcommittee continue to kind of work through some of this, and keep trial and error.
One thing, too, to keep in mind is, so we're looking at that $6 million that we would want to cut, if you cut, if we cut 2 million this first year, then that's 2 million next year, and 2 million next year, so the sooner some of these strategic decisions are made, then that carries forward, so, it's kind of that smooth landing.
Yeah, so developing a glide path should also be a priority, you know, but really, it's not-
But I also want to, again, at one point, we have to accept, just based on, again, going back to the housing, we were kind of expecting this attrition, so how are we preparing ourselves, and then, you know, if there are some projects, even if they start tomorrow, it's not like it's going to be done tomorrow.
Correct, to the city's plan, isn't it, like, over a 10-year horizon?
I'm trying to figure out, just based on, you know, again, what, where we are, just because of how Burbank is, you know, is, you know, no development, very limited, you know. I'm just curious, you know, do we have a, do we have a plan that at one point, we're going to say, you know what, you know, just the way this is going, it's a pattern, yeah, you can blame COVID, but you can't blame COVID for this much of it, this was kind of expected, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we were declining in enrollment before COVID happened, so, and again, I think that mirrors what's happening in California, where California is losing people.
14% last month, so, so my question is eventually, again, what are the other alternatives we're looking at, I know you don't like to hear the word selling, you know, no, but, but at the same time, you know, partnerships, working together, I liked some of the ideas that was thrown, getting creative, because our challenges also, I've always said, too, we also are a middle-class community, we don't get, you know, we're not, you know, singing to the choir here, but I think eventually, at one point, you know, we need to sound our alarms if it's necessary, in terms of knowing where we are, and, and there is attrition of teachers now, you know, that's happening, too, so, anyways, thank you, this was a really good question.
Thank you, Dr. Agakonian, any further questions?
Thanks, you both.
Okay.
Yes, we still need a motion. Nope.
We didn't.
We did not, we went right to, that's okay, no, okay, would you like to make one, then?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education approve a positive certification of the first interim report for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Fritner, and the second by Mr. Ferguson. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 5-0, thank you. Moving on to 14F, approval of school sites 2021, 2022, school plans for student achievement.
President Tabbett.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move the Board of Education approve the school sites 2021, 2022, school plans for student achievement as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, and the second, Dr. Weisberg, do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, please say no. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to 14G, approval of minimum wage increase.
President Tabbett.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move the Board of Education approve the minimum wage increase to $15 per hour as mandated by the state of California, effective July 1st, sorry, January 1st, 2022, as presented.
Thank you for the motion, and the second, Dr. Agakonian, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries 5-0. 14H, adoption of Resolution 19 for the elimination or reduction of services for classified positions.
President Tabbett.
Doctor, Mr., Mr. Ferguson.
Both Steves have been, you know, promoted twice, just saying, so I will move-
It'll happen more often, I assure you, but I have the doctors on the left, and the mister's on the right.
Dividing our board already.
Here we go, yes.
I will, I will move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 19 for the elimination or reduction of services for classified positions as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, and the second, I'm going to go with Mr. Fritner this time, Dr. Agakonian, I, thank you, any discussion? Questions, thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no, motion carries 5-0, thank you. 14I, acceptance of gifts.
President Tabbett.
I'm like, yes.
I move that Superintendent Hill, in, in a positive and joyful manner, recommends that the-
No, no.
What? What? I don't know what I'm doing.
You're doing great.
What, what do I say? That we, I move that we, what, what?
Yes, we take-
Take formal action accepting the following gifts to the district, and that the board president convey appreciation to the donors as presented.
In an upbeat tone.
Thank you, and when am I not in an upbeat tone, I'm just kidding.
It's your first meeting in four years.
All right, gift report, thank you to all of the donors.
We have to vote.
Oh, we have to vote. Okay, thank you very much, we'll get this together, give us a moment, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, okay, acceptance of the gift report carries by a 5-0 vote, thank you, and now, with upbeat, and what was the other term? And positive appreciation for the donors, thank you very much, I'm not making light of it, donations are very important to our district, and we're very appreciative. Thank you to Susan Magdaleno Fallon, who wishes to donate to the district an elliptical machine to be used for the students at John Burroughs High School. Calif, thank you to California Credit Union, who wishes to donate to the district $500 to be used for the athletic supplies at John Muir Middle School. Thank you to Bret Hart Elementary PTA, who wishes to donate to the district $575 to be used for assemblies. Professor Egghead at Bret Hart Elementary School. Thank you to Bret Hart Elementary PTA, who wishes to donate to the district $13,000 to be used for the fun-run teacher give-back for Bret Hart Elementary School. Bret Hart Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $13,500 to be used for the music program, Michael Paul at Bret Hart Elementary School. Bret Hart Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $3,000 to be used for the peaceful playground and supplies at Bret Hart Elementary School. The Black Bod Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $384.62 to be used as needed at McKinley Elementary School. The Black Bod Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $384.62 to be used for materials and supplies at Dolores Werthe middle school. The Black Bod Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $576.93 to be used for materials and supplies at Dolores Werthe middle school. John Muir PTSA wishes to donate to the district $50 to be used to purchase nurse office supplies for John Muir Middle School. Thomas Jefferson PTA wishes to donate to the district $1,450, $50 to be used for a non-instructional consultant BMX at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Does someone know what BMX, is that what we're talking, bike riding? Okay. That must be, then that's, it's, okay. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $10,473.50 to be used for the Renaissance Accelerated Reader and Star Reading at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $922.72 to be used to purchase 5th grade books, grade-level sets of Islands of the Blue Dolphin at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $1,204.23 to be used to pay bills and reimburse gift card and T-shirt at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $2,300 to be used for materials and supplies at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thomas Jefferson Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $1,400 to be used for the Ned Show at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Theodore Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $5,000 to be used for buses, for field trips, and entry fees at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School, actually, by Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Theodore Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $4,000 to be used for musical revenue, director expenses at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Theodore Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $1,655 to be used for Imagination Machine Writing Assembly at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Theodore Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $1,548 to be used for Ceramic Days at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. Theodore Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $600 to be used for the violin assembly performance by Niv Askanazi at Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School, sorry for my mispronunciation. Thomas Edison Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $5,000 to pay for teacher reimbursements at Thomas and Edison Elementary School. John Burroughs, class of 1957, wishes to donate to the district $3,259.21 to pay for updating the school's security cameras at John Burroughs High School, thank you. Team Jaguar Fundraising Committee wishes to donate to the district $60,000 to be used for materials and supplies at Joaquin Miller Elementary School. Netflix Productions LLC wishes to donate to the district $5,000 to be used as needed at John Muir Middle School. The Benevity Community Impact Fund wishes to donate to the district $70.20 to be used at the school's discretion for Providencia Elementary School. Providencia Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district $17,453.94 to be used for the music program at Providencia Elementary School. George Washington PTA wishes to donate to the district $7,500 to be used for field trips and teacher supplies at George Washington Elementary School. Albert Hernandez wishes to donate to the district $100 to be used for materials and supplies at George Washington Elementary School, and Andrea, the final last one, Andrea Kennedy, which is, wishes to donate to the district $250 to be used to purchase materials and supplies for classroom K-1 and K-2 at Joaquin Miller Elementary School. That's a gift report, thank you very much to all the donors, very appreciated.
President Tabbett.
Yes.
I will move consent calendar items 15A through 15AA.
Thank you very much for doing that, and for the second, Dr. Agakonian, all, anyone, no needs to pull, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion carries for the approval of the Consent Agenda 5-0. Let me move forward. Let me see where we go, no, not yet, oh, yes. I do have a retirement, and this one is very near and dear to my heart, we will greatly miss, not that we don't miss all our retirees and wish them all well, but I especially do this to my friend Kathy Jaeger, the coordinator, senior administrative assistant-
Everybody.
And in charge of the use of facilities, right? She was amazing, and we thank her for her, her years of service, she began working for the district in May of 1992, so, best of luck, Kathy.
Already feeling her missing at the SFOC meeting.
Yes, because she takes minutes at the SFOC meeting, and-
Generally keeps things running.
Right. Always kind, always considerate, just an amazingly lovely human being, so, thank you again, Kathy, for your years of service, we will miss you. Okay, now, finally, request to address the board, yes, we did it, I have blue cards, you may continue to turn in blue cards as I call names, and we hear from our folks, and then the superintendent and the board members can comment afterwards, so we will start with Andrew Francisco, followed by Susan Francisco.
Hi, everybody, I just need to pull up my-
You take your time, young man.
Okay, hello, my name is Andrew Francisco, and I'm a member of the pilot year of the DI program, which is what I'd like to address all of you about. My biggest frustration is that you expect us to show integrity, honesty, and kindness, and you have failed to demonstrate this yourselves with this program. I am disappointed that I have to say that, we have worked for eight and a half years with the state's sale of illiteracy as our end goal, and you say it was never promised. Our program was a crown jewel for this district, as we show up for events, drawing hundreds to a waiting list, the entire time we were in this program, we came to the district to represent all of what the program offers, and have been respectful and courteous, and my younger peers are identical in their conviction and effort. Based on what has been happening as recently, at your best, you've been thinking of appearance. Now that that has been said, I do have an idea of how to fix this, as I see it, there are three ways, one, accept the old idea, two, make a new plan, or three, give up, and look all of us in the eyes, and tell us what is going to happen, truthfully, and giving us the whole story. This has been a long and arduous journey that I have worked for, along with the other students of this program, to build, test, prove, and lead, particularly pilot year, and I remember what you promised us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Susan Francisco, followed by Joanna Mayall?
I want to say-
I want to say congratulations to Kathy on her retirement. She's lovely, so I'm sad to hear that she's leaving us. I'm here to convey my deep frustration with the lack of planning for the DI program going into high school. As a parent who was in all of the planning sessions with Rosa Molina and who attended every D-PAC meeting as I was the parent chair at Disney, I also ran DI summer school for six years, and I had an intimate knowledge and unique access to the planning of this program. When Tom Kissinger first pitched DI to us, our kids were still in TK, and he did so with immense pride because the school board wanted a plan that extended into high school. Their reasoning was that if the DI program terminated in elementary or middle school, we'd have a boutique program, and the language would be lost in high school. The reason we speak about kids from other DI programs is because they have to come to BUSD for high school, because the surrounding districts do not have programs extending in high school. I'm disappointed that we've wasted so much time talking about high school Spanish classes and medical and legal translation that would be offered, only to be told that our recollections differ from those in the administration. I'm disappointed that our board and district demand communication, integrity, and honesty from students and families, but do not offer us those same considerations. And finally, I'm floored that not one of our school board members, not one, had the decency or respect to respond to our many concerned emails. Matt Hill set up an email for us that really didn't accomplish anything on twelve-one, and then promptly turned his camera and mic off and did not engage with our parents. We are taxpayers, stakeholders, advocates, parents, and students. We should be made a priority. We are the people who elect all of you, and we pay your paycheck. I expect more honesty and transparency regarding all items concerning my kids and my district.
So, Johanna Mayall, did I pronounce your name correctly? I'm sorry if I didn't.
No, it's okay. It's Johanna Moyal.
Johanna Moyal. Thank you. And followed by Heidi Miller.
Okay, hi. Good evening. I too. I'm here to talk about dual immersion. Okay, so I'm here, despite my immense discomfort in public speaking, to address the failing dual immersion program. I want to ensure that everything discussed here is a matter of record for all to hear and recognize the next time your elected positions come up for vote. First, I want to start by saying that the program of, programs of TK and dual immersion instituted my initial faith in the Burbank Unified School District. The TK pilot program that we were a part of was strong and gave our daughter an educational foundation that she uses today. Because of the success of that program, continuing with the new dual immersion program was a no-brainer. During the beginning stages of DI, Dr. Kissinger and other program administrators communicated the long-term plan, teacher choices and expectations, and notes from the school board to the parents who had committed to the pilot program, thus creating an educational partnership. With expectations high and a belief intact, we moved and purchased a home in Burbank when our daughter was in third grade and our son was entering the DI kindergarten program to ensure our continued commitment to this partnership. Now, this partnership has ceased to exist. The original promise was a program from kindergarten through twelfth grade per the school board's demand, a seal of bilinguism culminating in grades fifth, eighth, and twelfth grade, real-world advanced Spanish classes, like Susan had mentioned, the medical or legal translations, things that they could use, and a continued support for our students in the program through twelfth grade. In reality, there has been zero support, particularly for middle school teachers, and obviously, as we now see, our high school teachers will be in the same boat. For example, my daughter's eighth-grade social studies teacher needed to translate the district standards-based final from English to Spanish, subsequently type the said test into Google Forms the night before the test that they just had last week. So, it could be administered in the target language of the class. Where was her support from the district? Why did she have to do that? We were told in two thousand sixteen in the Burbank Unified School District Master Plan, quote, "Steps are being taken to create a formal pathway through middle and high school years," end quote. It seems for high school, we are being told, "Our kids must fall into either AP Spanish or Spanish III." There is no class specific for them in a program that you say, wait, hold, I'm so sorry. Our kids are being told that they must fall into either AP Spanish or Spanish III. There is no, there is no class specific for them in a program that you say is still active through twelfth grade. We must fit in your already established language plan. No path geared to our dual immersion students and their unique skills. The sacrifices made by our students and families by committing to this program have been monumental and continuous. These kids have felt incredibly frustrated doing homework in a new language, felt ostracized in elementary school, and have given up electives in middle school to maintain their slots in dual immersion. Our family is not bilingual, but we saw the benefits of the DI program and trusted our children's education to the district's commitment of support through all the stages of this program. We have been let down. My kids have been let down. According to the last meeting, which we, the parents, had to ask for, there was no specific clear path for our incoming dual immersion high school students, however you spin it. After nine years of study and sacrifice, they will be just mixed into the pot while telling me it's a dual immersion path. It's not. So, please, I ask of you, don't just nod and humor us. Please take to heart what has been said this evening and call it, and consider it a call to action. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna. So, next to Heidi Miller's call, it's Thursday.
Yes. Good evening. It seems like just yesterday that my twins started in the dual immersion program at Disney. They're in the second class, and they started in two thousand fourteen, and now they're in seventh grade at Huerta. At that time, Tom Kissinger painted a picture of a program that lasted through high school. He told me that the board insisted on a program that included high school rather than one that just extended to eighth grade. I attended dual immersion PAC meetings, where the district hired consultants. Rosa Molina laid out a plan through high school that showed eligible kids earning bilinguism awards when graduating elementary and middle school and high school. So, imagine my dismay when my girls were in sixth grade to find that there was no coordination whatsoever between the elementary school teachers and the middle school teachers. My girls in sixth grade were doing work that they had done in second and fourth grade. That's outrageous. Yes, of course, last year was an unprecedented year, of course, which is why I kind of didn't say anything until January, when I found out that the social studies teacher and the Spanish teacher were basically assigning the same assignments. And it was clear that nobody at the district level was overseeing the program in any meaningful way. And to her credit, Dr. Meg has responded to many of these issues, but she shouldn't have had to do this on her own. She's never been part of the planning, and she's never been part of administering a dual immersion program before. Her response should have been part of a dual immersion master plan, which is now obvious the district never completed. It's a disgrace that the hard work of our kids and their commitment to bilingual education through high school has been ignored by this district. You need to complete the master program for them through high school immediately, and you need to ensure the kids are in a cohesive program in which their transition to middle school is a continuation rather than an interruption of their bilingual education. The three years in middle school should be spent working on a curriculum that prepares them for at least AP Spanish in ninth grade. Any student who has at least an A or B in middle school Spanish for Spanish speakers classes should be eligible to move on to AP Spanish, just as it's done in high school. If the students aren't ready to take AP Spanish after excelling in the prerequisites, then it's a mission by default that the district has not properly prepared our students and clearly has reneged on its commitments to the dual immersion program. And I would like to add, after sitting and listening to all of the issues that are going on in the district, that any meeting that we've had at the middle school level for dual immersion in the past year has just been at the behest of the parents, that we have banded together to get answers and to get follow-up and to get information, and none of it has been forthcoming until we have demanded meetings. And clearly, this district is capable of, of creating programs of excellence, and yet they've totally abdicated responsibility to the dual immersion program, a program that, if, if it's robustly developed, could attract and retain more students, as well as address some of the diversity issues, all of which we've seen tonight are critical to the success of this district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next, we have Kenley Miller, followed by Polly Stenberg.
I've been in a dual immersion, oh, God, I've been in a dual immersion program since kindergarten, and since, for a long time, I've been told that I would be put into AP Spanish. But suddenly to be told that we'd have to take an assessment to me is very frustrating. I'm giving up some very fun electives so I can continue learning a second language, which I absolutely love. I'm doing better in my Spanish elective than any of my other classes, and we've been holding up our end of the deal for a long time, to me, about eight years. To a lot of the others in eighth grade, longer. And suddenly, the rules of the game change, and I'm in seventh grade, and I'm already worrying about if I'm going to get into AP or not. And... To conclude, I would just really love by the end of my middle school year to have a foolproof plan so I know I can trust, that I know I can see a path that's very clear, so I know what I can plan out my future so I can have a good one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kenley. Next, we have Polly Stenberg, followed by Lisa Dyson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Polly Stenberg. My pronouns are she/her's, and I'm so happy to be here. I'm going to start by leaving some gifts. These are some Destiny Education Project notepads that you guys can have. We meant to give them out at our launch, but that got slipped by. So, here we are. This is for everybody. I'm a BUSD parent and co-founder of the Destiny Education Project. Since I'm speaking tonight both for myself, as well as on behalf of Destiny Education Project co-founders Carmenita Heliger and Nadra Ostrom, who are unable to speak tonight, I would like to request on their behalf that I be allowed to use their time in order to represent all three of us and our organization at this meeting, in particular, in response to the board having requested a study session of foundations.
That's not something we've ever done before, so if you could just stick to your five minutes, we'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so let me move through some stuff. A lot of it also, just for your information, I will submit this written then, because a lot of it stems and speaks to stuff that came up in the DEI presentation, as well as in the after-conversation about housing and about accessibility and the history of racism in Burbank. So, first off, I'd like to thank, so are we starting five minutes now or from the beginning of this conversation, just so I know?
Technically, it starts at the beginning.
Okay, all right. I would like to thank the entire school board and the facilities team for your support in helping to expedite the coverage of the Burroughs front sign during Native American Heritage Month. Something we thought would take anywhere from two to six thousand dollars only ended up requiring advocacy, great conversation, a little time, and a few buckets of paint. Covering the sign meant a lot to us and our indigenous community members. The Destiny Education Project is excited to continue to support the mascot update process as it continues in two thousand twenty-two. I'm going to skip down and speak to, in response to the board having requested a study session regarding fundraising and foundations, we would like to follow up on the nature of that session in order to understand what, if any additional information, would be needed from the Destiny Education Project so that we may be added to the district website, as is the case with Burbank Arts and Ed and formerly with Burbank Business Partners. We would also very much like the assistance in amplifying our work via email communication, as has been done for BAEF. This would include things such as promoting our fundraising initiatives, announcing our forthcoming panel series, which will be a collaboration with Jovan Myers and the Los Angeles County Department of Education, and sharing information about our forthcoming teacher support programs. Many community members have not yet heard of the Destiny Education Project and are unfamiliar with our mission statement and the support we aim to provide to the district, to families and students, staff and teachers, to help enact the vision as set forth in our district's anti-racist statement. We seek visibility and connectedness with all of our school administrators, the teachers in our union, with the employee resource group, with the school site DEI committees, and with all of our district families. District-wide amplification is the primary way we see these connections being achieved, as has been the case for BAEF. Once again, we applaud the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation and are humbled and grateful for their diligent work in bridging the gap, as they noted, in state funding per student as compared to LAUSD. I cannot stress enough how much we see our organizing work as happening in tandem with BAEF and the extraordinary work they have been doing for many years and continue to do. While we all know that in so many cases, a steady stream of financial resources is imperative to facilitate change and often requires foundation fundraising, as well as city and state-level advocacy, to support budget for things like teacher salaries, updating libraries, curriculum materials, and professional development programs, there is also much work to be done in this district that is not rooted in money but in conversation, idea, and information sharing. We, as a community, in our anti-racist statement have officially denounced racism as the product of white default supremacy culture. This was such a critical step in the right direction and to be celebrated. Also, as a district, we are still in the very beginning stages of dismantling white supremacy's stronghold in our school and community culture. This is something that we are explicitly working towards with the Destiny Education Project and what may distinguish our work in part from other organizations supporting programs in our schools. The abolition of white supremacy requires public conversation. I am daily inspired by artist, abolitionist, author, and founder of Black Lives Matter Los Angeles, Patrice Cullors, who wrote, "Honestly, you can't practice abolition in isolation. We have to practice it together." To this end, we have much reckoning still to do with Burbank's history and how its legacy relates to where we find ourselves now and attitudes of supremacy that remain prevalent today. In a nineteen eighty-seven article, LA Times staff writer Greg Braxton wrote, "For much of nineteen eighty-six, Burbank history buffs were excited over a dented, corroded copper time capsule, discovered last spring in a closet at Burbank Central Library, which had been buried in nineteen thirty-seven. In the capsule was a folder issued by the Chamber of Commerce praising the benefits of living and working in Burbank. 'If yours is an intellect which enjoys exercise, you will appreciate Burbank,' read the brochure. 'It is sort of a country city. It has the blessings of country quiet and repose and of metropolitan advantages, too. It takes its spiritual life as seriously as it does the education of its children.' The brochure touted the city's school system, which at the time had thirty-nine hundred students. Ninety-six percent of them are white,' the folder read. So, the rest, which is exactly to the research that you and staff and you're doing together, I'll submit written so we can all stay in that conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Lisa Dyson, followed by Emma Cusamano.
Hi, everyone. President Tabit and distinguished board members and staff and admin. I'm Lisa Dyson. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Destiny Education Project. This is a foundation I have seen go from a vision to a reality over the past two years. I have been so impressed by their founders' leadership and their compassion for our students, families, teachers, admins, staff, and all who are involved with our school community. I admire their goals to support our school sites as we address our anti-racist policy and implement that policy as a district. Their mission includes empowering our school communities by supporting and sharing diverse perspectives, both historically and present day, and by doing so, we're all learning and growing, I hope. The fact that they back up their mission statement with funding for curriculum resources for our teachers and staff so that every child in our district will feel seen and heard is an asset to our whole community. As a library coordinator, I understand firsthand how difficult it is to fund our libraries from site monies. I think we talked about that tonight. The Destiny Education Project is helping fill that need by providing grant money to John Muir Middle School... by providing grant money to John Muir Middle School to update their shelves, the goal being that any student walking into any of our site libraries to check out books will find themselves represented, will find stories about them. We are so lucky to have the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation and Destiny Education Project. Both are excellent resources to accomplish the same goal, to provide the best education for all of our students. I proudly support both of these foundations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Emma Cusamano, followed by Erin Schlossman. Emma, you have handouts for us? If you would give them.
Good evening, and congratulations to you all in your new positions. My name is Emma Cusamano, and this is Celine Antonian. We are seniors at Burbank High School. We have been victims of repeated bullying and harassment. Our reputations and characters have been compromised from the situation. Details about the case aside, we feel that the district has failed to protect us. Consequences were given but taken away, which has opened a hostile and unsafe environment for us at school and in our sports. Profits were made at the cost of our mental health and educational rights. We believe that not all of our concerns have been addressed properly, and we would like to bring awareness of the situation to the school board. We have provided evidence that has already been submitted to the district this morning and would like to give it to you all to review later as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. So next, we have Erin Schlossman, followed by Joel Schlossman.
I first want to congratulate you, Ms. Tabit, on your new position as president of the school board. And I want to also say thank you to the rest of the school board members for all you guys do. And I also want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to the John Burroughs High School Choir for their performance and singing us churros, because I think they did a spectacular, wonderful, wonderful job. Sorry if I slurred my words. I'm not that good at public speaking. Again, my name's Erin Schlossman, and I am a, I work in my school cafeteria at John Burroughs High School. And doing that, I have the pleasure of seeing how things run and operate from behind the scenes. One of the things that happens at the end of each day is we throw away whatever surplus of food that we have. So whether it be pizzas, packaged food untouched, it gets thrown away. And I just want to see if we could change that and maybe donate it or find a different way of, a different outlet, sorry, to where we can allocate those sources to someone in need, again, like a shelter. And then I started thinking about this. If we're doing this at John Burroughs High School, then we're probably doing it at the other two high schools, at the middle schools, at the elementary schools, and just seeing the amount that we throw away at our school. When I'm thinking about all these other schools, it's a mass, mass amount of food that's being wasted. And I just wanted to see if we could do something about that or change that. And then I also wanted to say, you guys recently, you guys recently got rid of the public speaking at the start of the meeting. And coming from a student's perspective, having to wait till the very end of the meeting, I know some meetings are short, some meetings are longer. Having to wait till the very end to speak cuts into time for, I know today there's no school on tomorrow because of finals, but for date, for, you know, weeks and next semester and years to come for school the next day, it makes it harder to get sleep and finish homework and do those responsibilities. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you. And last, but not least, Mr. Joel Schlossman.
Good evening once again, everybody. You know, Mr. Fritner, your arrogance is only surpassed by your ignorance. I fought you on the parcel tax, but only because it was ill-conceived and deceptive. You know, talking about money, we were talking about the minimum wage. You had no problem voting to give these four people permission to surrender their vacation days and get paid for them. And that's about $20,000 each. It was about $80,000. And that money could have been, you know, given to these minimum wage workers. But you wanted to reward these people and put them in the same category as the superintendent, who enjoys that benefit. You've done a lot of things that are off-base that are, that are, you should be really ashamed of yourself. You know, you changed the oral communication, so all these kids have to stay here. And that happened on your watch. And they could, they could have been home already. But they stayed, and I salute them. Now, we had some singers here that was terrific. These kids, you speak Spanish, it's worth every penny. These are the future leaders, and these are intelligent kids. So that's a highlight to hear them speak in Spanish. And Mr. Fritner, you received a plaque today, and the school district had time to make that up for you. And for years, I've been calling for something nice for the benefactors of this district. And some of those names that come to mind are the Lori Foundation, the credit union that teaches our kids, that runs the financial thing. I talked about this back when Aga Khanian was the president. He says, "Yeah, we can do something about that." It's never happened. I've never come to one of these meetings and seen you reward and acknowledge these beautiful benefactors. You read their names, but they get nothing. Ms. Tabit, President Tabit, you know, you've talked about making our schools safer. It occurred to me, you know, I was in front of Burbank High School, and one of the kids, one of the kids driving was spinning their wheels. And they were doing it in front of school employees. And I'm sure these employees know who these kids are. And did you know that anybody can sign a citation? Yes, you're shaking your head no, but the answer is yes. Oh, yeah, it's true. All you have to do is have a city attorney who's willing to prosecute. And if our employees witness this, they can go to court and testify. And the problem is, you know, the police doesn't, don't encourage this because it's hard to get people to go to court. But our employees will go to court. So any of your workers can sign a citation. It doesn't have to be that instant. They can give it to them the next day. And you can make some effect on this crazy driving around our schools. Earlier, I talked about the, I talked about, you know, at 5:00, I came and I talked about some emails that the superintendent wrote. And two of you talked about, you invoked the Brown Act. It was Mr. Ferguson and Ms. Weisberg. And you said that he couldn't send an email to the five of you. That's nonsensical. I think we need some Brown Act training. One of us is wrong. Now, let's have that training right here, because you're just off-base. The superintendent can communicate with you. All five of you, he can send you an email that's not violating the Brown Act. That's his very job to communicate with you. My son talked about food waste, you know, and the superintendent, I'm sure, will dismiss his comments and say, "Well, we're just following the rules." Rules, you can change the rules. This is a tragedy, a travesty, to throw away food when people are hungry. And Mr. Fritner, I think that you're just out of touch with your job over at Disney. And you have, you know, you need to have some compassion for the people earning minimum wage, because you're surely not earning minimum wage. Talking about the shrinking kids, your reduced enrollment. You know, the problem with it is, and it relates also to the parcel tax, when you bring in the kids from out of the district, they don't pay any money. And that's why, part of the reason I fought you on the parcel tax. And I'm, we're paying over $300 million right now in school bonds for the improvement of the schools. And the kids coming in, they don't pay a dime. So.
Thank you, Mr. Schlossman.
A quick question. Mr. Ferguson, you talked about developers buying an entire block for these duplexes. What block is that?
Thank you, Mr. Schlossman. Okay, moving on to staff superintendent comments and responses. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you to all the speakers this evening. For our first group of speakers around the dual immersion program, it's definitely clear at the last meeting, not all of your questions were answered. And there's some frustrations and uncertainty about what's going to happen in high school. We, our eighth graders are now moving on to high school. After the meeting, staff and I have met with the teachers, as well as revisiting our plan, looking at what was developed back then, where we are now. There's going to be a meeting in January for the eighth-grade students so they can sit down with the high school teachers and the middle school teachers. They're going to talk about the assessment that will be taking place. I know some of the concerns of, they want to be automatically placed in AP Spanish. AP Spanish, one component is around the language, but there's also the academic rigor in that class as you go there. So we want to talk through that, make sure there's a good assessment to be able to place our students appropriately. We want to make sure that they're successful in high school and then be able to talk about the course sequencing all the way through. So that meeting will be happening at Huerta with the eighth-grade students to talk through. We're always open, and we stress that on the webinar. Our staff stressed that, that if there's feedback on how we've done the middle school program, we want to look at that, we want to improve, we want that continued feedback. For the high school program and in the middle school, one challenge has been finding teachers that have bilingual credentials, B-CLAD, so that they can teach a subject matter course, as well as do it in Spanish. It's extremely difficult to find. That has been a challenge at the middle school level and is a challenge at the high school level. We still have that aspiration. And so whenever we have a vacancy, we've been looking for those candidates. But that is a challenge, and I want to acknowledge that. We don't have that at the high school level right now for our students. Scheduling and staffing is another component. We'll talk about that in January, of making sure as we assess the students, putting them in the class. So we're not going to create a separate dual immersion class. And I know there's a disagreement on this. We're never going to do a separate dual immersion class. It was going to be either AP Spanish. We talked about Spanish IV potentially. There's been challenges in the past of having enough students in Spanish IV. That's why we were talking about Spanish III. So there's a lot more details, and I want to make sure we have the settings so we can have these conversations. And that will be happening in January. Ms. Stenberg and Ms. Dyson, thank you for coming down, talking about the Destiny Education Project. It's great to hear about donation to help continue to diversify our books. That's something that the board and staff, we've set as a goal for fundraising. So we welcome all of our partners. It's great to hear about the alignment with Burbank Arts Education Foundation, the specific agenda questions around the study session. That's something we'll be working with the board president and vice president to develop what the agenda will look like. But that is a conversation that the board wants to have around foundation partners. Ms. Cusamano, thank you for coming forward. It was very nice to meet with you, have the conversation today with Dr. Paramo. It's clear that, and I apologize, I didn't, I didn't realize we left that meeting at that place. So I thought we were talking about next steps and moving forward. We shared information with the board. If it's different than what we shared with me, I'm sure the board will talk about the concerns. If it's the same, we started talking about the plan of action and the next steps at Burbank High. So Dr. Paramo and I will continue to work with you all at the school site to address those concerns. Mr. Schlossman, thank you for your ideas around food waste. One thing that has been a challenge through COVID is that we had to stop our shared tables. And this is where students can place excess food they don't want to eat, and others can take those. The COVID restrictions have been lifted, that we're able to start bringing back those shared tables. So that's an immediate action, and would love your involvement at John Burroughs High School and working with Ms. Kukta and the Food Services Team as we bring those back. But in addition, I also want to open an invitation that we're going to be starting a sustainability committee in January. And one of the topics that's already been proposed is around food waste. And so there's going to be a lot more analysis on that. There are some restrictions now, but we want to be able to be creative with that and talk about what else we can do. And I know our food service staff and Ms. Kukta are excited to explore those options and get feedback as the sustainability committee. So we'd welcome your participation and your ideas. And you can connect directly with Ms. Kukta to share those. So again, thank you all to the public comments this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Board member comments and responses? You got the next meeting.
Thank you, President Tabit. Thank you to all of our speakers for coming out tonight. It was mentioned before, and I'll start first off discussing the structure of our board meetings. We did make a change. Starting at the last meeting, we felt it was necessary to try and streamline our meetings to have the ability to have people hear the business of the board. Some people think that's not important. I think hearing the significant discussion on our budget tonight is very important to a lot of people that live in the city. Having said that, we are still, you know, we still have worked in multiple comment periods so that people can comment on agendized action items, can comment, you know, earlier if there's a closed session item. And we hope to continue this streamlining. I understand, and thank you for the students who have managed to stay. As I mentioned in a previous comment earlier this evening, no structure is perfect for everyone. When we had comments earlier, we used to have people saying, "I can't get there." You know, when you have, your meeting's starting at 7:00, I'm still dealing with my family. I'm trying to do dinners and help with homework. I can't do it. So it's never going to be perfect, but we are hoping to have meetings that are, you know, that are efficient, that we get to the business of the meeting and still provide opportunity for public comment. To all of our speakers on the dual immersion program, the program was implemented long before I was actually on the board, so I won't comment on what promises may have been made by board members at that time. As a parent in the district, I tried to follow what was going on, but I will say I didn't, my students were already much further along than that and weren't going to be involved, so I probably didn't, you know, follow it quite as much. Dr. Hill, just, I know there's, you know, been the parent meetings, and they're more scheduled. We do feel it's an important program. We want to see it continue. We want to see it flourish. Having said that, there are obstacles. Dr. Hill mentioned trying to find teachers who are bilingual, who can, who are able to teach in multiple languages. Having enough students who can be enrolled in those classes that we, you know, it's difficult to have, as we were talking in our budget meeting earlier, and, you know, with 30.5 on class size, if we have classes that have very minimal enrollment in them, you know, which would be partly the case. So we're trying to work through that. And I hope our administration, you know, I know, I don't say, I hope, I know they will continue to try and work with you, with your students, with parents, to try and find a proper pathway forward for your students that gives them the opportunity to use the knowledge they've already acquired through their elementary and middle school years and improve on that and keep moving forward. It's a situation we will continue to monitor, and hopefully, we'll be able to find something that is working for your students going forward. That's certainly our hope. And I apologize for not responding to emails. It's, and it's something, we've talked about communication many times at our meetings. And I will fault myself. I won't speak for other board members. I know that's an area that I have found myself not always being as efficient as I should be. And there are times when at least acknowledging the email, even if I don't have an answer for you, would be better. And that's one of the instances I didn't. So I apologize for that. And I don't have an answer for you right now, as, you know, a definitive answer. Doesn't mean we're not going to keep working on, you know, for a solution. Something that Something that can work within the structures we have, but still works to help your students improve. But communication is something we can all work on and I'm certainly no exception. To Ms. Stenberg and Ms. Dyson, the Destiny Education Project, I think you've gotten off to a great start, you know, in the first few months. We appreciate the contribution that's being made. The offer to help with the Burrows, as you pointed out, didn't wind up costing us nearly as much as we had anticipated with the Indian mural, but also with the contribution at The fundraising committee, the study session, once we've got schedules, we'll be able to provide more information on that. But certainly, we, you know, we want to work with all our district partners and the foundations that are out there willing and ready to assist in our district. And you certainly, you know, made that clear that you are. And you're not, you're ready for action. You're ready to move forward. And Ms. Stenberg, I appreciate, as you pointed out, everything doesn't have to necessarily be tied to money. There are, you know, non-monetary changes that we can also be talking about and should be talking about and will continue to be talking about. Stephanie's presentation, you know, talked about a lot of that. And we know your foundation has already pledged to be there and continue. And I agree, change won't come unless we are working together and practicing together. And I think that's a great way to look at it. So thank you. Ms. Cusmano, the BHS chair, I don't, that's probably not something we can discuss here, but thank you for the information. And we will keep, you know, we will, I know the superintendent and Dr. Paramo have already been discussing this matter and, you know, with your groups and will continue to, and we'll, and we'll review this information as well. Mr. Schlossman, Aaron Schlossman, thank you. Thank you for your working at the Burrows Cafeteria. I think it's great. I agree, wasted food is an issue. It's been, as the superintendent pointed out, we did have sharing tables for a long time. I know there can be issues with, like, health issue, Department of Health issues about what can be done with some food after it's been served, even if it looks like it hasn't been touched. But that doesn't mean we don't have the conversation about where, you know, where are those guidelines and what can we do? What can we, and is there a way? And even if that isn't used, is there a way to start composting rather than just throwing it away? You know, making some kind of useful, you know, finding some kind of use for it. So thank you for bringing that forward. I think it's a great, great idea. And, you know, and again, something that, you know, definitely Food Services, I think we'll have a good discussion about that. And the Sustainability Committee, as Dr. Hill pointed out, is forming in January. As it's gotten late, I won't really, there were a lot of events during the month of November, December, I won't really go into. I'll just say, I hope everyone, after, you know, what is undoubtedly stressful and very difficult semester for students, parents, teachers, everyone, I hope everyone can enjoy their, the winter break and just have a wonderful holiday season. I wish you all peace and we'll see you in the new year.
Thank you, Dr. Fritner. I know.
Thank you, Madam President. Regarding the dual immersion, you know, I grew up in a system that it was dual immersion. So I've shared this before. I speak on four languages, but some of them got rusty because if you don't speak the second or third language, you just forget about it. But it's like riding a bicycle. I know my colleague mentioned this earlier, but this was before my time, but I've said it a couple of times and some people actually have criticized me for emphasizing too much on the fact that our students should learn a second language. It's mandatory. I mean, to me, I tell my students in my classes, you should travel, go to another country, Mandarin or Spanish. So I agree with you. I was not aware that the promise was made and hasn't continued, but I just want to let you know how supportive I am. And, you know, I hope that we can come with some kind of a solution to continue these programs because it is a future of education. It is the reality of it. And I sometimes joke about this, but I tell my, sometimes my students, I said, and these are business students, you know, in either an MBA level or undergrad, said, all of you eventually will work for Amazon, whether you like it or not. But I always tell people also how global we are and how you should speak a second or third language, right? So I appreciate, and to the young speakers, you did wonderful and your Spanish was, you know. So just keep us in a loop, keep me in a loop. And, you know, I hope that we can continue. I know some neighboring districts even have, you know, language academies now, so we should look at the options. As far as Ms. Cusmano, I would, I have to read this. Thank you for the nice package. And then to our friend, Mr. Eric Schlossman, Aaron, Aaron Schlossman. I really like your suggestion. I think you should look into see if any, what other districts are doing possibly. Try to see if there are any other school districts are doing something similar, you know, in terms of saving the food or even, I know there are restrictions involved, but there's always ways to find it. Even when it comes to grease, I did, you know, I did start a biodiesel program when I was at Merrimount as a project of, you know, grease being thrown away. So it eventually turned into bio and byproduct, if you made a mistake, was soap, you know, if you really went wrong on the whole. So I think we should think about ideas and, and so maybe you should look into other districts to see if there are something similar and what we can do. But thank you for bringing that forward. That was a very good idea. And with that, I want to wish everyone, you know, happy holidays and thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Agarconian. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. She, her, hers. I did just want to very quickly point of privilege. So yesterday, one of the, one of the people who's inspired me most in the world of education passed away, Bell Hooks. She's somebody I look to constantly for inspiration and for education. She's a scholar, teacher, activist, super powerful. And a quote of hers I think about a lot is she says, "The classroom remains the most radical space of possibility." And I think about that all the time. So I just wanted to share a little bit about her because she's somebody who's very important to me and my growth as an educator. Mr. Andrew Francisco and Ms. Kenley Miller, phenomenal. Thank you. Very powerful. I think it is incredibly difficult to get up here in front of a bunch of adults you don't really know, sitting in like fancy chairs, weirdly elevated, and to, and to share that you aren't happy about something. And I think it's so important, it's a great lesson for all of us, that you can have uncomfortable conversations, but they're still really important and they mean a lot. So I want, I hope you will continue to have those difficult but important conversations, both of you, and that both Kenley and Andrew, you'll reach out to us, you can email us directly. I want you to feel like you can talk to us about concerns you have. So very impressed, very appreciative. Ms. Francisco, just to echo what Mr. Fritner said, I, and this is going to sound ridiculous, I pride myself in responding to every email. I didn't. Often, if I see a district staff member respond, I don't respond. And I think that, to Mr. Fritner's point, you still deserve a response from us. So I'm always happy to talk, I promise you, you will receive a response from me. And it's an important reminder that even when you hear from other people, you still want to hear from us too. So I appreciate that deeply. And to all of the speakers who spoke about the DI program, I'm learning a lot as I hear you speak. I do want to encourage you, please reach out again. I will answer. I'm going to learn more about it. One of the questions that I have, and I'll ask this in an email to you, is a little bit of clarification regarding the difference between, so what I hear is the frustration over the assessment. And I'm wondering, and again, we can't have a back and forth because that's not how this works, but I will email you to ask, is, is part of the question wanting a separate DI class or is the question focused mostly on the assessment? So I'll reach out in email so I can better understand. I also, I don't know if it's possible, but if the board could, whoever wanted to, could sit in and listen in the January meeting via Zoom, cameras off, we don't have to be all weird, but it would be great just so that I can better learn and understand the program, if that's okay? And we can talk about that offline. Polly and Lisa, thank you as always. I'm not going to say anything everybody else already didn't say, but I mean, I think foundation partners are unbelievably important. I've seen your sincerity and your drive since you started and I really look forward to having conversations about how we can make partnerships work. And it's an area that I'm learning a lot about, but I know we'll have many conversations moving forward, thanks to you both. Emma, Ms. Cusmano, thank you. I give you my sincere word that I'm going to read through all of this. I also want to encourage you to feel comfortable reaching out to the board. I know that it is, again, a scary thing, no matter how young or old you are, to come up here and speak, but this is really thorough and I will give it my full attention. Aaron, I love your idea. I have a couple of thoughts. Mr. or Dr. Agarconian and I are the two board reps on the Sustainability Committee, whenever that happens, and I think his suggestion to have you be on it is brilliant. Another thing is that I've been working with Councilmember Schultz to talk about issues of homelessness in Burbank. And I think sitting down and talking with him, let's, the three of us sit down and talk. Let's figure out a way. I know that there are, I don't know, I'm going to preface this by saying, I don't know all the health code. However, I do know that there are groups in Burbank, there's an organization called Homemade Thursdays that goes out every Thursday and feeds people experiencing homelessness in and around Burbank. And they don't, I mean, they're just a community-led group, so I imagine they don't have the same restrictions. I don't know what the restrictions are on our end, but I think that in talking to Councilmember Schultz and talking with groups like Homemade Thursdays, we can absolutely figure out a way, hopefully. Again, I don't know the legal code around health issues, but I, I know that there are places, if it's allowed. And at the very least, I think starting conversations with our council members and participating in the committee is going to be, your voice is going to be so valuable. And I really appreciate it. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I also appreciated, Aaron, your comment about how our shift in public comment affects our students and I, and also I'm sure our parents with smaller children. It's definitely something that I think we're going to talk about and think about. The goal in shifting public comment, again, was not to silence voices, but to provide an opportunity for board business so that you could learn more about what's happening in the district, which is definitely not everybody's cup of tea, but is somebody's cup of tea other than mine. However, you gave me some great food for thought tonight as far as how this structural shift affects our students. So it's given me, please know that it's given, I think, all of us something to think about and talk about. So now I hope you don't feel like, you know, when you come up here, your comments and thoughts are not dismissed. They're heard. So thank you to all the speakers. And I think that's it. Happy holidays. Sorry, Hanukkah's over, so I keep forgetting. Hanukkah was stupid early this year, so happy holidays.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you very much. We'll try and keep concise but quick. First, I will read. Thank you very much for coming down. Thanks for spending your night with us. I know it's been a long testing day, so thank you. We'll take a look. And I remember you. So thank you. That's first. On dual immersion, it's sounding like kind of a three-fold problem, right? So there's, there's the general revenue problem, which is always a problem, right? There's a hiring problem and there's an enrollment problem. So those are three, correct? And then assessment challenge. So it's three, four and a half different challenges, right, that we've got to work through. I have, I remember how things were characterized. I can understand why, at a minimum, there's a miscommunication. On the other end, what the heck? So totally hear that. I don't know if these problems are fixable, genuinely. So being upfront, as students asked us to be. Having said that, I do think that as we move through our budget process, right, if one of these problems begins to fall and we can find a pathway to offer, I think that's where staff is at naturally. But for us tonight, what I think I can do is say, if we can have, because Dr. Weisberg serves on the DEI committee, I serve on the Budget Subcommittee, if we can co-join those meetings and track as we move through, just, and again, no promises, but that we will be attentive to it every step of the way, as it is a priority for us to have that program. It does draw folks in. Again, logistically, it may be too much with what we're trying to lift, but we can promise attention and focus on it and continued communication in that way. That's a path forward, if that works for you all. There's nothing I want to take from you here at all, but it is about logistics. And thank you for sitting through our meeting a little bit tonight so you could understand the very real challenges we're managing. So again, I'd like to participate in that. If we could have invites sent to us so we can participate and sit through, that would be just really important. Thank you to all of our student speakers who, again, just blow me away. You know, I think that's the whole point. We want people to be able to connect with, again, global communicators is always a goal. I think Dr. Agarconian has talked about this for a long time, but again, global communicators is what we hope to develop in Burbank Unified, and this program does a great job of that. So again, that's my commitment and that's, I think, what we can continue to talk as we go through the budget process. So that's on that step. Mr. Schlossman, Aaron, first of all, great speaking. So you're doing just fine and thanks for bringing it up. So when I was a first-year board member, my, I think it was first or second month, I went dumpster diving at three of our schools. It was a fantastic experience that made me completely miserable. Having said that, I learned a lot about what we throw out. And so a part of the discussion was about food waste. And at that time, at least, the clarification that I got was that as a part of the federal subsidies that the USDA offers schools for food, there, at that time, was a contingency that you couldn't give that food then away. So I don't know if that's changed. That very well could have changed, but there are a lot of these kind of weird rules that aren't sensible, that don't make a ton of sense. But what we can do is if we run into one of those, I think it's important for either as a Sustainability Committee or wherever, for us to be able to pivot and to show you somebody who can address that. A member of Congress can change FDA regulations. That's a reality, right? So things like that, that I don't think we should abandon your idea in any way. I think we should explore it and I think it's a, it's a good one. And also, thank you for working for our district and representing us on the daily. To Mr. Schlossman, I was not clear clearly on the Brown Act. The superintendent absolutely can inform all of us. There are Subcommittee roles, there are different roles that the board has through board bylaws and through frankly, tradition yielded to each other out of professional courtesy. And so as a result, the superintendent doesn't always have to call for a 5-0 vote. Board members can defer to Subcommittee members until it can become a full team conversation, if you will, before the public, for everybody to weigh in and see. So apologize if I was unclear there. But again, I think there's still overall plenty of work that we can do here. And again, just on the DEI front and on the foundation front. Thank you, Polly, for coming down. I apologize that we couldn't give you more time. It is an equity issue. We want to give everybody five minutes and to yield or collect, suddenly somebody could come in and say, I represent 10 people. Give me an hour. So that becomes a challenge for us when we're trying to get through a meeting. Having said that, foundation work has been really, I think you all have seen a need and you're rushing to fill that in the best way possible, and that is helping us. I think where we have to figure out, as we talk about again, our budget scenarios and our budget problems, is that we can't not have a situation where we have 80 organizations all saying, you know what, it'd be really nice if we painted the trees blue today. So we're going to go. we're going to go raise money for, for all the blue trees, and then football suddenly can't raise money for helmets, right? And so, it's not about saying no, but it is about saying strategically, how do we best work with you to identify priorities to fundraise for that are going to align with district priorities that help us move the ball, instead of putting us in a situation where you may acquire something with your funding that you worked really hard to fundraise for, that then goes into a shelf because we can't provide the staffing, et cetera, to support that? So, I think that that's really important, as you are a newcomer to the scene, so to speak, to make sure that, hey, we can align those, those expectations as a board, set those with you as we have for the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation, and again, welcome you to the ecosystem as, as, again, either a component of this or your own project working on your own fundraising. This is where the partnership has to get, to start. In addition to that, hopefully, the conversation is also about fundraising generally, right? So, we have some schools that can raise $100,000 without blinking an eye, other schools that are begging to do $12,000. What we can't have is a foundation based off of your values helping to perpetuate inequity within the district, right? Or any foundation perpetuating inequity. And so, a part of that conversation also has to include fundraising restrictions, also has to include how we raise programming for everybody as we reduce funding overall. So, these are challenging, but I promise you, the conversation is, again, how do we bring you in? How do we take your mission and either align it to what's existing or figure out how best you can be the most effective with the dollars that you are raising on behalf of the students of this district? So, good conversation ahead. Happy to continue to talk, either offline or in person, at least. So, if, if any of that wasn't clear, we can continue to engage. Okie dokie. So, thank you very much, everyone. And from my pug, Winston and I, happy holidays to everybody. Stay warm, stay fed, and just, Burbank Unified, what a year. Thank you. Thank you.
My turn finally, right? Thank you to all my colleagues and their comments. Mr. Schlossman, I'm going to start with you this time. First of all, thank you for the information that a citizen can give a citation. I, I didn't know that. And I, and I imagine, yes, watch out now. I imagine that it would be difficult for a staff member to see, in your example, a, a person in a car burning, you know, what do, what do we call those? Burnouts, whatever? They have, I mean, yes, well, I'm going to forget that line of, let me go back to what I, I'll forget that, we can talk about that offline, but permit kids, I really, you said something that is really incorrect. Permit kids bring in the same amount of money that any kid does. Any child whose, as we put it, their bottoms are in a seat, we get money for. It's my turn.
But you're misquoting me.
Okay. We get paid for kids who are in seats, and it's the same amount whether they live in this community or live in the next commit, community and come here on a permit. It's the exact same amount. The, when there's a, a parcel tax or a bond, yes, everybody in that community pays for it, but it goes for the good of all the kids, not just some of them. So, I just want to be clear on that for the rest of the community who may be listening and may have misinterpreted you as I did. Okay. Aaron Schlossman, my colleagues have all stated things about your idea for, for food waste, and you're right, I have no idea about the, about the laws and the governing rules over how to share food, but I certainly think it's something we can learn and discover. And I also think there's plenty of organizations in this town that would love to be able to partner with us, I'm including you in this, Aaron, on, on what we could do with the excess food. Burbank Temporary Aid, Burbank Coordinating Council, all of those folks may have answers. And I'm just wondering that if, if there's not regulations, then why haven't we been down this road before? So, it may be that the regulations are stopping us. So, just bear that in mind, but certainly great questions to ask. Oh, well, there you go.
Google.
Google's a wonderful thing. Dr. Weisberg Googled, and there's some information that we can share. I know.
Why have staff just Googled?
Right. There we go. Ms. Kusamano, Emma, thank you for coming down and preparing information for all of us. Obviously, all of us are concerned and, and are being thoughtful about how things are being looked at and handled, and I'm sure that something will come of what you've brought to us tonight. So, thank you for that. The young folks, I'm hitting the young people first, although I did do Mr. Schlossman first. Andrew, Kenley, thank you very much for coming down and sharing your thoughts and ideas with us. Your Spanish is beautiful. Well done. Including, which I appreciate, not that I'm a Spanish speaker, but I know enough that if I know the topic, I can follow along with what you're saying. And having worked in a community as a teacher with a large Hispanic population, your accents are beautiful. So, not just your, your syntax, but how you speak also is well done. So, thank you for that. Also, my father was the only child out of eight who did not speak Spanish, just because of his, you know, in line, so, and I greatly regret, regret that everybody else in the family could speak Spanish but my father, and therefore, that meant I didn't get that either, so.
Still time.
Yes, there's still time. But that's why I say, if you speak, and I know the topic, I got you, but, you know. Anyway, so, thank you for sharing that, and I'm really hoping, the adults who came to speak as well as the kids, that this is something that, as my colleagues have said, we should be able to, with the meetings that Dr. Hill has presented, should hopefully be able to work through. So, and again, I also apologize for not answering letters. I read everything that comes through my email. There are some things that I choose not to respond to because they're, as this, a program base that those who are in charge of putting those programs together really needed to respond to, but know that I read everything. So, and sometimes I comment and sometimes I don't. I don't know, and you can send me an email that says, sometimes I just need you to say, I read it, thanks for emailing us. And if that's sufficient, I'm happy to do that. Did I miss anybody? Did I miss anybody? Oh, okay. You know, I'm looking forward to conversations about this, Ms. Polly and Lisa, as we go I worked for about five years because I felt that it was really important to have one education foundation in our district. And at the time that I started the work, we had two, and really spent five years working to bring those two together so that we could go forward with one. And, and now, an opportunity for a second one again has come up, and so, the conversation needs to take place on how we view that and how we look at that. It, it kind of veers away from my philosophy, getting the two together in the first place. And I'm talking about the Arts For All and Burbank Educational Foundation that are now one group. So, I'm not, I'm, conversation needs to happen, and that's my, my thoughts on that. What else? Did I hit everybody else? I think I did. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for supporting the reorganization meeting, which I know can go a little bit longer because that takes time. And thank you to everyone else, and happy holidays. Okay. And I think, wait, I need to find my agenda and make sure that we are, yes, so, tonight's meeting is adjourned at 10:40, fine, in memory of Edgar Oriano, Ariana.